Welcome to Athens City Council. This evening, we will be meeting in council committees. The meeting will be called to order by the city council president, who will then pass discussion over to a respective committee. The chair of the committee will introduce the discussion topics and provide an overview of the issues at hand. If needed, members of the administration will offer brief statements to provide further context. We will then welcome input from the community. Any citizens who wish to speak will be asked to state their name and address, both verbally and on the sign and sheet located at the podium. Individuals will be given one opportunity to share their thoughts, and the committee chair will have the authority to limit each speaker to three minutes. Once all citizens have had the opportunity to speak within the 15-minute time period allotted for total public participation on each topic, the public comment portion will be closed. Council committee members will then continue their deliberations. There may be additional questions directed to the administration during this time. When the discussion on the topic concludes, the chair will indicate whether legislation will be introduced at the next regular session of council and move on to the next item on the agenda or adjourn the committee if their work is complete. The next committee chair will then call their committee to order, proceeding in the same manner as before. Once all committees have adjourned, city council will conclude for the evening.
Good evening. It's Monday, 7:02. This is Athens City Council. We are meeting in committees tonight. I'm Jeff Reisner. I'm ward representative for the second ward, but tonight I'm president pro tem. As our mayor is out of town, the president of council, Sam Crowe, is acting mayor. And tonight, we have several items for our committees to meet. The first is a committee of the whole. When we have a committee of the whole, all members of council are part of that committee and also will stay here at the dais. They will not have to leave the dais. So the first item of the whole is Transit Development Plan, HAPCAP, presentation. And I believe we have a couple of distinguished guests here from HAPCAP.
I don't know about distinguished, but thank you for that.
If you give your name and who you're affiliated with.
My name's Ben Ziff. I'm the mobility coordinator with HAPCAP for Athens and Hocking Counties, and I'm affiliated with HAPCAP.
And I am Carolyn Conley. I am the transportation director at HAPCAP.
Yeah, so we are here tonight to give counsel. And also, before I even say that, thank you for the time. I appreciate you guys putting us on your agenda. I know you have a lot to work through and get processed and everything, so thanks for making the time to talk to us, old transit folks. So we just wanted to give you an update and sort of the people of Athens out in the ether of the internet, sort of an update on the Transit Development Plan. So we'd initially planned on just coming to talk about stuff, but we have a slideshow that we're going to try and roughly navigate our way through. Navigate Transit Jokes? You're welcome. Bank that one for later. So we're going to skip through some of the initial stuff here because it's a little sort of not directly related to what we're trying to get to. We just received the final draft of this whole process, but it is sitting in our inboxes, and we have not had a real chance to actually process everything yet. So once we've had a chance to do that, we'll probably come back to council again, if you'll have us, and give you a, perhaps, a slightly more in-depth look at everything. But at least tonight, we can give you a rough overview of everything that's going on, our plans for the future, challenges that we're trying to navigate now. Navigate. Transit humor, it lends itself to you. It's very easy. So up first, we've got, look at that beautiful slide. We're going to skip past that. What we're covering is not all of those things. We're actually going to blitz through. We're not in September. It says we're here, but we're not. Transit Development Plan. Just to sort of roughly give a brief discussion of some of these slides. The Transit Development Plan is a process that Athens Public Transit, Athens On Demand, here with HAPCAP, that we've been working on since December of last year, really in earnest since January. We've been working with a consulting firm out of Portland called Nelson Nygaard, working with the wonderful consultants Paul Ludy and Marvin Ralson. Excellent guys. And we've done a massive amount of community surveying. We got over 300 responses, which, if you've ever done surveying, you know that's a pretty impressive number. It's hard to get anyone to answer anything, especially when you're like me, sitting on a bus saying, "Hey, bus rider, please fill out this survey because I need your feedback." But we got a lot, which was really, really helpful. You can't really do these things in a vacuum. You just go off of what you think is the right choice, then it's not exactly helpful. You need to actually see what the community wants. So we got a lot of community feedback because that's really important with this. There's a thing about how things work, which is actually kind of nice. We'll touch on it a teeny bit. One thing you can see there, the existing service works good. A lot of people thought that, which is very, you know, it's very heartening. Usually, things are disheartening when you do surveys, so that was a nice change of pace. Some sort of things that aren't as super relevant. Don't need to get into that one. We're going to skip past that one, too. We're going to move on past that as well. Where are we going? Right here?
Yeah, essentially, well, essentially, what we did is we put out some different information. We, you know, explained what the existing routes were with Athens Public Transit, and we put out some scenarios, and the slides have kind of been skipped through. Just go over the different scenarios we put out there to the public to get some feedback. You know, if we changed the route this way, how would that, would that work for you? Would that not? And this is a kind of a method that Nelson Nygaard has used for other communities, and it's worked out really well because sometimes if you ask people just open-ended questions of, you know, what would you like to see change, you get some good feedback, some not-so-good feedback, but guaranteed all across the board feedback. So by limiting it to these scenarios, it really kind of kept the conversation to what was possible and not just, you know, flying cars and things like that. You know, kind of kept it grounded. So that, just to quickly go over some of the slides that we kind of passed through quickly. Yeah.
Ongoing.
Yeah, because these are all just the different scenarios.
There we go.
But ultimately, what came out of when we surveyed the public, and just to add to what Ben said earlier, too, we also had focus groups, which were with stakeholders, so like Ohio University, the libraries, the city of Athens. You know, we tried to come up with focus groups that we felt were stakeholders in public transit as well and got their feedback. And from the public surveys, both onboard the bus, community surveys, and the stakeholders, the one thing that ran, came to the top was Saturday service. So that's something we used to be able to provide in the past, but unfortunately, with budgets and increasing costs, you know, reducing, lower budgets, higher costs, it hasn't been able to, we haven't been able to provide that really since COVID. But other things that people were interested in seeing is longer service, more hours in the day, starting earlier, going later. And we did hear a lot about other communities within the county, Gloucester, Jacksonville, and Trimble, being, you know, a primary area that people ideally would like to see fixed route transportation on.
I will say, just while we're on the idea of Saturday fixed service, that is probably the number-one thing we hear from people is that they want Saturday service. But a figure I like to always present, I mean, I don't like to have to present this figure to people. I wish I didn't have to. I wish we had unlimited money. But realistically, with our budget, with the service we provide right now, it costs roughly $10,000 a day to run Athens Public Transit. So when people say, "Why don't you have Saturday service?" Well, do you currently have a little over half a million dollars you can give us every year? Because that's what that equates to, realistically. Somewhat shocking figure. I think people forget how expensive public transit is. Not just gas. There's a whole lot that goes into it. Moving on from there, the preferred service plan. So this is where we sort of ended up with all the surveying, with all the focus groups, with everything that we talked about with the community, the service plan that looked best to most people and also looked best to us. Now, I want everybody to keep in mind, this is not something that we can implement immediately. These are changes that we're looking at between one and five years for a lot of these changes. Some can happen sooner. Some are going to have to happen later. Realistically, it's about budgets and things like that, and also planning. You can't just completely change your entire service overnight. You'll completely fail. Yeah.
Go back just really quick. Some of the big focuses, though, are making routes bidirectional. So we rely on a lot of loops right now. In the Plains and Chancie are two good examples. We, one route goes, you know, clockwise. The other route goes counterclockwise. That's great when everything's working perfectly and you have the funding to keep both buses running, but we've run into an issue where we've had to cancel some of those services, again, because of budget cuts. So then it's taking a long time. If you're going from point A to point B, and it's a short distance, maybe a mile, it's quick to get there, but then maybe you're running like 10 miles back by the time you do the whole loop. But also, looking at just productivity of routes and trying to make things more streamlined and some, reducing some duplications. So ultimately, we want to be more effective and efficient with our current resources and then chart a path forward for hopefully, future resources that we can hopefully bring in our direction.
I guess, before we keep plowing ahead, you know, this is going to be an interactive moment here. This doesn't just have to be us yammering away at you for 15 minutes. Does anybody have any questions so far?
Just a comment. I think it's great that you are hoping to develop a route that does go to Jacksonville, Trimble, and Gloucester. I think a lot of people in those villages would really appreciate that.
Yeah, agreed. That's definitely been one of our goals for a long time, and we still don't have a clear path forward of how to make that happen. But definitely having data that supports that. Instead of Ben and Carolyn thinking this is a great idea, you know, having, you know, community feedback and stakeholder feedback to hopefully justify, you know, gaining those additional funds and being able to actually make that happen is super important.
I wish we could just base things off of what Ben and Carolyn thought was the right way forward, but probably not. I'm just trying.
Two questions, Ben. Bidirectional, that's out and back, like on East State Street?
Yeah.
And second, and you may be getting this later. If you are, I'll save the question. But you mentioned funds.
Funds.
Are you going to be talking about that later?
We were going to touch on it a little bit, but we can touch on it right now. Why not?
So if you don't, if you don't run Saturdays and Sundays, you're running approximately 260 days a year, $2.6 million, $10,000 a day. Where do you get your money? And how much of that comes from the city of Athens?
Bake sales. I make pretty good.
Good brownies.
Yeah, actually, I'm going to pass that one. You're more familiar with the finances than I am.
So rural transits across Ohio and really across the nation all work in a similar way. Each community is a little different, obviously, but essentially, a couple nuances aside, it's a 50-50 match. So 50% of our funding comes from the federal government. It's Federal Transit Administration funds. It's actually called Section 5311. I know I'm kind of going in the weeds here. So, but for every dollar we are awarded and are drawed down from FTA, we have to come up with a dollar in local match. So even if someone was like, "Here's $5 million of federal funds. Have at it." If we couldn't come up with, you know, $5 million in local funds, we're limited. We can only draw down as much as, you know, locally we can raise. So with that being said, we have several things kind of in play. So we have what's known as contract revenue. So we actually run bus service and charge somebody or something, an entity, money to do it. Two great examples are the buses we run for Summit and Courtyard, the two apartment complexes off of Richland Avenue. Those are actually private roads. So because they're not public streets and because they also want a system that's tailored to their residents' needs, we actually charge them an hourly rate to go up to the apartment complexes and run their residence, you know, to and from campus or wherever else they ask us to go. Bobcat Pass with Ohio University is another revenue source. So essentially, we have worked out an agreement with OU that our regular fare is $1. They pay us 90 cents per passenger. We take a tally of how many, you know, faculty, students, and staff get on the bus, and then we bill them at the end of the month that 90 cents per passenger rate. And we have other smaller ones. With our demand response, we also operate Athens On-Demand Transit. So there's some smaller things with jobs and family services, where we're taking people to doctor's appointments at a contract rate and things like that. The city of Athens historically has provided about $200,000 a year in local match, and that went to everything from operations to the local match required to buy additional buses because we're always needing to replace those. So the city's been a great partner and has been really stable in that funding over the years. 2025, it's looking like about $150,000 is what the city of Athens is going to be able to, you know, handle with, you know, their budget strains as well. Those are our primary ones. Fares kind of count a little bit, but honestly, they're a drop in the bucket. So it's really stringing all these revenues together to pull down that federal dollar is really what we spend a lot of our time doing. Hopefully, that answered your question.
Perfect, thank you.
Maybe more than you wanted.
No, just don't take my elderly rider identification card away. I love this. Could you change the name, though, elderly rider?
So actually, yes. So we are, so the title for that, it's a specific form. It's at the ODOT sort of state level. It's called the E and D, the Elderly and Disabled Form. We've decided to change it at least locally. It's now known in HAPCAP world, Athens Public Transit, as the Reduced Fare Form for senior citizens and individuals with a disability. It's just, it's a little longer, but it sounds a lot better. When you tell someone like, "Oh, you can get this form." You have to fill out, it's called the Elderly and Disabled Form. Thanks. So we'll be changing that. So that's, yeah. You're welcome. Any other questions before we keep plugging away? Everybody feeling good? Buckled in? Nice. See, Transit Jokes. These are just some slides that are sort of going into some of the changes we would make on individual routes. You can see Route 2. No need to talk too much there.
No real changes.
Yeah, pretty much the same. Route 3 is, wait, is Route 2 or Route 3 the one that's? Oh, I guess the only change with Route 2, realistically, would be potentially getting rid of its service up to the ridges because it's duplicated by the OU CATS shuttle. And it's, there's a very, very low ridership from APT everywhere. So just as a way to give our drivers a little bit more time to get places and to allow for potential changes in the future, might be getting rid of that. Again, a lot of what we're talking about is all still very sort of ethereal and potential things. None of this is set in stone. Might be written down in ink, but it's not carved in stone. So there we go. Route 3, again, not much there. Route 4 is one of the biggest changes that we would want to hopefully do. If you're familiar with the APT lines right now, Route 4 essentially connects the east side of Athens, out east, or the east side of Athens to the west side of Athens, going over by Central Avenue, out East State Street. Line 4, in this instance, you can see on the slides there, it looks a little funky. It's a weird-looking route, but I promise, it actually makes sense. And one benefit, I know that we've gotten some complaints from people who live on the east side there, especially over the Morris-South May area. They don't really like the buses driving by their houses. Totally get it. But this would actually circumvent that, so that would no longer be an issue for those folks, rattling their windows and such. But it's important, it is odd, again, but it's important that we make sure we're able to service places like Columbus Road, Sheltering Arms over on the west side because there's a lot of people who are really public transit-dependent who live in those areas. And with the growth that's happening on Columbus Road, we want to make sure that we're sort of at least trying to plan a little bit for the future. Also, speaking of Columbus Road, all right, shared use path. Let's go. Ooh, very exciting. Mobility. Six. So line six, one thing that we'd like to be able to do is sort of start treating the Piggly Wiggly out on the plains as more of a sort of a micro hub, if you will. Currently, the main hub for Athens Public Transit is at Baker Center. So this would have actually a couple of different lines that would line up time-wise at Piggly Wiggly. So people would be able to go from Nelsonville to the plains if they wanted to, as opposed to just Nelsonville to Athens or whatever, they would be able to connect to that line, and it makes it a little bit of a smoother trip. Am I missing anything?
No, but this is one of the routes that historically has been a loop that we're going to make bidirectional. So again, it's easier for people to understand. It's easier to get from point A to point B without having to go out of your way. So that is one of the goals of this change.
Yeah, it's a thing that, actually, I steal this from Carolyn, and I say it all the time now, is that one, it's not just the goal for public transit to just funnel everyone into Uptown Athens. All these communities that we service have their own independent economies, and we want people to be able to shop where they live. So having a bidirectional route in the plains allows someone to go from Piggly Wiggly to their house or from the library and up, back and forth. They don't have to do a giant loop going around. And as well, as you can see here on line seven with Nelsonville, that would also go from being a loop. Currently, it goes out through the highway. There's a big loop through the city and then comes all the way back. Which, again, if you live in Nelsonville, if you're trying to go somewhere in Nelsonville, it's really not very convenient. So this would allow people to be able to travel in their actual community and be able to, you know, partake in the services that exist around them, which is, I would say, pretty obviously a good thing. Yeah, so that's one of those changes. And you can see going down to the bottom there, connecting to the Piggly Wiggly. Line 8, the newest of them. Ah, I wouldn't even have a line 8 right now. So that'd be pretty cool. That's the line that would be servicing the tri-village area with Gloucester, Trimble, and Jacksonville. It would still, you can see on there, there's one thing that people need to get to a lot using APT is JFS, Job and Family Services, excuse me. So this would still service that at least one direction, perhaps, maybe not both directions, just time-wise. It gets a little tight trying to make it from the plains all the way up to Gloucester and back. But this, again, as you can see, is bidirectional, which would, again, allow people to exist in their communities, not necessarily just to get to Athens, but of course, it still would give them an opportunity to get into the city, to do a lot of the shopping they'd like to do, which is, of course, important. Anything else? Doing pretty good? Not totally screwing this up? Nothing going on there? Ooh, you might have to take this one.
Yeah, this is probably a little bit deeper of a conversation, but one of our routes that is the most expensive to run and the least performing is our Route 7A, which goes down to Albany. So it connects the city of Athens to the village of Albany. It's just really expensive to run. We do have riders. I do understand for those individuals, it's a lifeline. Without it, they might really be, you know, kind of stuck. So we're looking at different ways to still provide service to those communities while being aware of our budget and conscientious of our funds. And one of the ways to do this, it's kind of a trend in transportation, believe it or not, those actually exist, is micro-transit. And essentially, what happens is you operate these smaller vehicles. This is one that's in Ohio, but obviously not right here. They run these smaller vehicles, and the vehicle has maybe 10 locations that it stops within a community. And it's not given times. It's more Uber-style. So somehow, either call in or use an app to say, "Hey, I'm at stop number 10, next to the Albany Library. Please, please come get me. I'd like to go to the post office." In the same, and then the driver within, you know, a certain window of time would be able to provide that ride. And then in the same, at the same time, if someone's interested in connecting to the fixed route then in Athens, this micro-transit fleet would be able to then pick up that individual and take them to another hub where they can then connect to and ride the rest of the bus system. So again, this is actually a cheaper way of operating. And then it does allow people to move within their own community more freely instead of just funneling people, you know, from point A to point B. So this is, this is something we're still wrapping our mind around as well. So I'm happy to try to answer any questions, but I might be a little fuzzy, to be honest.
I can't resist asking if you have, along the lines of this concept, if you've spent any time looking at the Mikros in Mexico? They have like almost vans that are public, and you pay them money and they take you like almost wherever you want to go in the city of Mex, in Mexico City, which is a massive city. Although there are fixed routes as well. I used to take it back and forth to the National University of Mexico every day.
Oh, super cool.
Yeah, a mikro, and, which is the same as the word you're using.
Yeah.
But I'm guessing, I mean, yours is much nicer there, but theirs were pretty low cost and they worked really well.
Yeah, yeah. See, I mean, somehow, I'm not surprised that this is a trend that's catching on in the US, kind of a late behind everybody else. that's catching on in the US, kind of a late behind everybody else. But, you know, we'll get it figured out eventually.
We do our best. Got up here next.
Yeah, this was just a little more detailed about.
Detail stuff. Implementation. Oh, yeah. Okay. Yeah, so implementation stuff. Like I said before, this is not, you know, we're going to roll this out tomorrow. This is all very funded-dependent. It's all funded? Funding-dependent? Weird word. Funding-dependent as well as just planning. There's a lot of work that goes into actually making all this happen. You can't just draw a line on a map and go, "That's the bus route. Go do it." Yeah, there's a whole lot that goes into that. But looking at the preferred service scenario, which is the one that we've just gone through, I do want to say that this slideshow we're going through is a little older now. This is from a few months ago. Unfortunately, our budget is not quite as good now as it was then. Some things are always changing, which is always a delight. Bring this this way, sorry. Sorry, Scott. Scott told me to talk into the microphone, then I stopped talking into the microphone. But as you can see there, it's about 1% higher than existing APT or what was existing back in September. So currently, we're operating at a bit of a deficit. So we are at a negative percentage. And that debt is starting to stack up, which is always really fun. So I know some people might see that 1%, and they go, "Well, it's just 1% more. Can't you do that?" No. No, we can't, not yet. Yeah. And that's just to get, that's without Saturday service or Sunday service included. So as you can see, the next little tab down there, paragraph down, with Saturday service, as I talked about before, that's a significantly larger amount of money. Again, we're looking at like in the half-million-dollar range or more, depending on when it comes time to implement that. The world of inflation, you know, we all know how it is right now. Everything's colossally expensive. Hooray. But yeah, that's a pretty significant increase. And then with Sunday service being an even larger increase. And there is the possibility of trying to maybe limit some of the lines that are running on those days, ones that might not get as much use on the weekends. But, you know, we don't want to provide no service. We want to get some, but hopefully we'll get there. Yeah. Eha. What else we got? Reduced. Ooh.
Yeah, so we're kind of in this position, right? We're planning for the future. We are laying out all these things that we want to do. We're talking about how we will do it, why it's important to our communities. But to be honest, currently, we don't have the funding to do it. And even more so, like Ben was saying, we're actually probably going to have to look at reducing service a little bit further before we can start moving forward with some of these ideas. And part of it is that we have been running at a deficit. Now, just to be clear, it's not that we now owe the bank money or anything like that. We actually have a little bit of what's referred to as a transit reserve. But unfortunately, that money is starting to dwindle, and we don't want to tap into that too much, because part of that's going to be like the local match for the new facility that we're trying to build, local match for purchasing new vehicles. So that transit reserve plays a very crucial role in all the other functions of the transit system. So it's probably going to get worse before it gets better. But this is really a roadmap to help us make an argument for ourselves to hopefully be able to get more funding. A couple of the things that we're trying to do, nothing official yet, but we have been in conversation of potentially going for a county-wide sales tax levy that would support transportation directly. And that would make a huge difference, because that is money that you can count on from year to year. Now granted, it fluctuates some, but it's not the same as if one of our contracts decided not to renew with us. It's more stable than that. And it's more stable than, say, relying on Bobcat Pass for a per-student ride. So that is one of the things that we're looking at. We're also hoping to have conversations with Ohio University and maybe looking at how our partnership works now and if there's a different approach to it, because there are different ways that cities and universities kind of coordinate on transportation. So we're trying to look at that as well. But I want to be realistic about where we stand, and I don't want to sell everyone on these great ideas that we have to move to the future without acknowledging some of the challenges that we're facing now.
And I would, just to add to that, the idea of a sales tax levy, what we were talking about before with the local match, with the federal funds and everything, that kind of money, we could then, you know, that's local match, we can pull down federal funds in that amount as well. So that would be quite the game changer for us to have that kind of stable income. Realistically, if you look at a lot of the transit agencies around the state, the most successful and the most stable ones are all ones that either have a really robust non-emergency medical transit program, which we don't, that's JFS's world here, or they have a sales tax levy for transit. Those are the things that really, really make a successful transit agency, is that stable funding. There's some around the state that have them for five years, some for 10. There's a few of them around the state that have them as permanent, which I would love, but I suspect that'd probably be kind of a hard sell for some people. But just to keep that in the back of your mind, you know, that's, yeah, pretty cool stuff. What else we got? Anything? Ooh, next steps. Refine the service plan. Well, that's what we just got in our inbox like last night at like 9:00, and we haven't had a chance to get through it yet. But we're working through that, and again, once we're able to fully process the final draft, we can come back and do another deep dive with you guys, if you'd be interested in having us back. Yeah. Anything else?
No, but happy to, you know, answer any questions or go over anything in more detail now or discuss more in the future.
Any questions? Additional questions? Go ahead.
Well, you know what I'm going to ask about? Remember the signage that we talked about?
Yeah.
Make that clearer and easier, and the sign's a little bigger and some kind of information or, I don't know, QR code on it or something, so people know when to get the next bus or something like that.
Yeah, that is a plan, actually, that I have. That's sort of, as the mobility coordinator, one of my roles is to sort of find those little gaps in things and try and fill them. So that is a plan that I have with my coworker, Joel, is to hopefully build like, we'd really like to have a whole site where people can go for like, you can go to the QR code that we, like, because you can just take those stickers, you can just, nice vinyl stickers, slap it up on an APT sign, and then people can go see that. It'll give rider information, it'll give them route information, and then hopefully even some videos, like how-tos. Because transit is inherently, I think, kind of an intimidating thing for some people. You know, you're worried about getting on the bus. Am I going to get on the right bus? How do I pull the cord? Ah, am I going to like eject the window if I pull the stop cord? Oh, no. So hopefully, we'll be able to do all of that.
Thank you.
Make it even better.
And that was some of the feedback we did receive from the community surveys, too, was just helping the public understand how it works better. So that's on our radar as well.
Yep. And just a quick plug for me and my program. If you ever have any questions about transportation, mobility, this isn't just for council, this is for anybody watching out there. We're back here. If you want, a service I provide is actually going out and riding on the bus with you. If you're just nervous to do that for the first time, I will go do that with you. I do that regularly. I'm doing that tomorrow morning with some students from Tri-County. We're going to go to Pizza Cottage, get some lunch. That should be fun. I still haven't been there, so that'll be exciting. I'm going to go eat too much pizza around noon.
Maybe this is for your deeper dive later if you come back, but I would be interested in who's riding the buses, if you have any demographic information. And then maybe if we know that, you're probably looking at this, but it'd be interesting to know if there are some groups of people in our community or in the county that are not riding it that maybe would benefit from it and, you know, might need more, I don't know, another approach of reaching out to them or something.
No, absolutely. And that demographic data was part of our surveys. So, I mean, obviously, it's still a sampling of who's on the bus and who's in the community, but we did get some of that information, and that is part of the final report. We can certainly share that. Thank you.
Member Wood?
Yeah, I'm curious what the total ridership looks like and how much you think that'll increase with the new routes. And also, I get from what you're saying, that's not a huge amount of the revenue, but I'm curious how much that does end up becoming part of the mix.
Sure. So it's, prior to COVID, we were small but mighty. We really had, and we still do, we had a very robust transit system that was well-used. Our ridership was around 400,000 a year, which for a community this size is really quite remarkable. As you can imagine, COVID hit, and our numbers, you know, plummeted. We are on the rise. I don't have the exact numbers in front of me, but I think the last year, we were right around 325,000. So we are on the rise. Now, granted, I don't think we'll be able to hit that 500,000 number again until we bring back things like Saturday service and complete, you know, kind of go back to the way we are. So really, my goal, and my personal goal, you know, with some of these changes, is that we get back to those levels, because they were really, I mean, for a community of this size, they were impressive ridership levels. And I think we can get back there. It's just a matter of building ourselves back up. It's just going to take some time, and then making changes that make sense to the community, because our community has changed over time. So we need to, you know, this gives us an opportunity to change what we're doing to reflect, you know, the community at large.
And I think, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think Fairbox for us generally returns about, was it about 60,000? 60,000. And unfortunately, one sad thing about Fairbox FTA regulations is that it cannot be used as local match. So we're able to use that towards expenses, in which it brings that down, which is good, but we can't use it to draw down more funds. I don't exactly know why. I have called the FTA and sent them probably 50 emails, and I've called them a ton of times. Eventually, they just stopped replying to me. Some poor bureaucrat was just tired of dealing with this weird transit guy in Ohio. But next time I'm in DC, I'm going to go to their office. I want to find somebody. I'm going to, hey, tell me why.
You mentioned some partnerships you have. Have you approached the Athens City Schools? The reason I ask that, any student 7th through 12th grade can take advantage of a program called College Credit Plus. And the greatest impediment for many kids that are at the high school to participate in that program is transportation. And now that you're running this bus to the plains bidirectionally, coming up Plains Road, you make a right on Johnson Road, left through the parking lot, hell, and back out to Plains Road, you're right over Piggly Wiggly in the bread section. I mean, it's that quick and easy. But have you thought about contacting them? Because I know there are, I have a granddaughter at the high school, and 9th graders and 10th graders, some of whom would like to participate in College Credit Plus, can't, because they're not old enough to drive. And then once a student becomes old enough to drive, as we well know, there are many students that do not have a car. So maybe we're contacting, I'd probably suggest Chad Springer, the new Associate Superintendent, and see if we can work out a partnership with them.
Well, members, I would say if you're driving a car and you find yourself in the bread section, you've gone too far. But that's the kind of thing we can absolutely reach out out of curiosity. I mean, I know we're not at a point right now where we could probably deviate a route to that extent. That's going to add probably close to five minutes of driving, which doesn't sound like a lot, but when you start adding that up after, you know, multiple, multiple, multiple loops a day, suddenly you're an hour behind. But going forward, you know, with looking at redesigns of routes, that's, eh, I love partnerships.
And have to just be during the school year?
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah, probably not during summer.
Or Saturdays or Sundays.
Yeah.
Unless we get a lot of snow days.
Yeah.
Anyway, something to work, look into, maybe.
No, I appreciate that suggestion.
Anyone else got anything? Administration? Member Clawhelter?
Yeah, I was just thinking, we've had people come and talk to us about how since those, oh, I can't remember the name, the apartment complex across 56.
Kershaw.
Yes.
Kershaw Green.
Since that went in, that there are a number of people walking along the street there and crossing that, you know, 56 right there on the Union Street, and that it's dangerous. Do any of your routes go to the Kershaw Green? Okay, good.
Yep, we have line 5. Yeah, I think line 5 pulls into the Kershaw Green parking lot. We're working with the city right now to get a sign up there just for clarification, as well as across the street at University Estates. See how the bus goes in, does a lap in the parking lot, and then makes its way back out.
That's great.
Yeah, so we do provide that service. So if you live at Kershaw, you can take the bus. Think about that, please. My camera, right there. Right there.
Everywhere.
Take the bus.
Well, this is a minor point, but it occurred to me that apartments like Kershaw Green, if there was a sign inside, you know, when you first come in, so people know about the bus? You know what I mean? Like, they have that little house, little place where you come in with the office and everything. And I looked over the information in there one day and didn't say anything about the bus. And I thought, you know, in all the apartment buildings, if there was something about bus service up or available easily for new tenants, that might be helpful. And to encourage the office people to let them know, well, you know, you can take the bus.
No, I totally agree. I think that's a great point. Yeah, I've made it a point over the past couple of months to try and go to a lot of the sort of local, more trafficked areas, like a lot of the, all the different ERs. And most of the medical facilities now have a nice laminated book of all of our routes that I made for them. I try and sort of disseminate that info. I put it in local coffee shops, and I just stick it up wherever I can. But putting it in the actual apartment is a great idea. Yeah, I'll do that. That's low-hanging fruit. I love low-hanging fruit. I love to jump very high. Nice. Anybody else got anything?
If that's okay.
Yes, please.
So, you know, this team does a great job in shaking trees locally to try to find places for the local match, whether it be the contract service or the relationship with Ohio University or whatever else. But I think it's important for you to know, as we're talking about the various types of service, the only local government that provides part of the local match is the city of Athens. So, and for operations. That's one of the reasons why I think their idea of a county-wide sales tax makes a lot of sense to provide operation things, because right now, you send 1% of the income tax mix. So that's the post-specified levy, general revenue that comes into the city. 1% of that is what goes to, by that mix, is what goes to the transit fund. And that generates, as the team here said, about $150,000 a year. This year, the budget for them was, I think, closer to 220, if I'm not mistaken, somewhere in that range. The way you made up for that was a request that I made to you back in the spring The way you made up for that was a request that I made to you back in the spring to transfer $65,000 from the capital improvements fund to the transit fund, to base up, make up for the shortfall, so that they still got their, their, you know, their federal match that, that they needed to get. So, you know, I've given a lot of notice about 2025, that 1% of the general revenue fund, so that income tax mix that come in will bring about $150,000. And so, you know, I, I spend my days being the guy that, that tells people, like, there's not enough money for the thing that you want, and I have to do it with these guys, too. So when it comes to our support to the, the three villages, to Nelsonville, to Albany, all of those things are wonderful, but the City of Athens is the only government entity that is putting money towards the operational local match for, for Athens Transit.
And I would just like to say, just to thank the city, because, you know, I know we talk a lot, Director Stone and I do, but the city does really an amazing job of working with us, and we have, we're very fortunate to have such a good relationship, a good working relationship with the City of Athens. I know a lot of other mobility managers in the state who are housed in transit agencies who do not have such a good relationship with their, with their local government, with their city administrations. So we are very fortunate to have that. I do appreciate the city. You guys are great.
Well, thank you. You've done a really good job with the presentation. I appreciate all the information and the packet that you sent us via email.
Yeah, I have, I have some paper copies, if anybody here would like one, or a presentation, I can give you one. I brought several, so, yeah. Unless anybody's else got anything else?
No.
Bye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Thank you, guys.
When the audience gets settled down, we'll, we'll proceed. Next item for the committee of the whole, income tax increase. And this is a topic we've been discussing for a while. The administration has provided, uh, copies of, of an ordinance and resolution that would be necessary if council decides to move forward on this for first reading for our next regular session. So I'll open the committee of the whole for discussion.
It's public.
Okay, public, if you have anything to say. Mary?
Yes, Mary Abel, 48, Strathmore, Athens. On this proposed city income tax, the increase goes from 1.95 to 2.25, which is 3/10 of a percent on earned income. And when you first look at this, it sounds pretty innocuous and not too bad, but however, that equates to a 15.3846% increase on taxable income. I took some general income categories and rounded the increase to 15%. A person earning $25,000 a year currently pays city income tax at $487.50. A 15% increase as proposed raises that to $562. A person earning $30,000 per year currently pays city income tax of $585. A 15% increase would raise that to $675. A person earning $50,000 per year currently pays $975. A 15% increase on that raises that to $1,125. Now, I see on social media that many of the people in our community are struggling to make ends meet. We know that inflation has hit everybody and everything. And many people are really struggling to make ends meet and have hired, have had to make very hard choices on their expenditures and their budget. I would like, at least, to ask some questions. What belt-tightening measures has the mayor and city administration made before asking for an increase in city income taxes? The last increase in our city tax was sold on the need to increase new staffing in the fire department, the police department, code office. How many new positions were created and funded in those areas following the passage of the last income tax increase? What has been the overall increase of additional staff citywide within the last five years? And how many of those positions have been less, not filled or vacant because of funding? What would be the distribution of this proposed city income tax? By that, what percentage is going to the city pool bond, general operation, fire department, improvements in the bond, personnel? And I'm sure there are many others that you can think of as well. In recent months, we've also had an increase in sewer rates, code rental fees, and probably some others that have been passed on to people in the city. The proposed income tax increase is a real pocketbook issue for many of your constituents. Though should not the city administration and council take a very hard look at the budget and determine where there could be potential cost-saving measures? I doubt that many people in this city are going to receive a 15% increase in their income this year or next year. Another question is, how much more money will a 2.25% tax increase raise? And what is the anticipated amount of money the current income tax will generate by December 31st, 2024? Or what is the amount that you know of as to date? And has this increase gone up, or has it decreased? Those are some of the questions that I think people are asking. And I would like to give council an opportunity to address some of those. Thank you.
I don't, as you said, these questions really go towards the administration. It's not up to council to provide that kind of information. I mean, the, the topic tonight, just to be clear, is council is not considering an income tax. What we're considering is a motion and a resolution and an ordinance to place it on a ballot. It's a question that would be decided by the voters, not city council.
Correct.
So...
I understand that.
Right. So in that case, then the information that you would need would then come out during the election.
Well, I'm not sure, because I think voters need to have some of that information to be informed prior to that. I realize that...
I, I agree, but that would have to come from the administration, not from council. Council only gets the information from the administration. I'm not an auditor. I, I depend upon what the administration says to me, as, as does everybody else.
Well, I know that the, the council, as a legislative body, really has the authority on the budget.
Yes, we, we do. We can say yea or nay. But that's pretty much as far as we can go with it. We don't have a line item veto, and we certainly can't say, well, um, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm starting to lose the, my train of thought. Go ahead.
Well, can you at least tell me how much money the current income tax is generating now? I mean, that is something that I think should be known.
I'll toss this to the administration. Treasurer? Service Safety Director? Any idea?
I would need to buy the computer.
I've got.
I've got. So, so, today, and this, this can be found on, really, when you look at the closing reports that we're sending out to, to council every month, you can find this information pretty easily. Today, we, we brought in $14,650,000 in income tax. That is about a five, 4.9% increase over last year to this date. Now, that's through October. We don't have all the November numbers in right now. So we have increased by about 4.9% over this year.
Okay. So I guess my point would be, if that is increasing, I would question the need to put it on the ballot. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience? Go ahead.
Uh, at the podium. Can we have your name, please? Yes, my name is Aaron Leatherwood. I live in the second ward on Coventry Lane. I, I heard, just through the grapevine, that people were talking about a zoning variance...
Wait a minute. That's not the topic here. The topic here is an income tax, and you're talking about...
Oh, no, I have no comments on the income tax increase here. You're correct. I thought you were asking if there was other public comment.
No, not, well, other public comments about an income tax.
Very well.
Refresh me on where I go from here.
The city administration, and then you can go to council.
Administration? Anything bad?
Sure, I provided all my comments two weeks ago.
Okay. Now, council, weigh in. Who wants to go first?
I'll go.
Okay.
And let's, if somebody else wants to go, I'll certainly defer to my colleagues.
Member Swank?
Um, I, I guess my philosophy is a little bit different than the chair's on this. This is a tough one. This really is, this, this is a tough topic. As you correctly said, council won't be voting on raising taxes. Say it again. Council will not be voting on raising taxes. We will be voting on putting on the ballot for some voters to decide a levy. But what this council can decide is what that levy looks like. But this is where it gets dicey. Some of the voters will get to vote on a tax that they won't pay. They won't be subject to, a significant number of voters. And some people will have to pay this tax, and they won't get a vote on it. Someone who lives in Albany, Gloucester, Chansey, the Plains, who works in the City of Athens, will pay the tax, but they won't get to vote on it. That's a tough thing to consider. We've been offered a proposal to increase the tax 15.38%. .3 cents. One of our speakers asked, how much will this tax generate in a given year? Director Stone advised us and gave us lots of information last time, which I truly appreciate. And while I'm at it, President Crowell, I appreciate you putting this for discussion again, because I just think we glazed the surface last time. So thank you, sir, for allowing us this opportunity. We'll generate $2,587,000 and $693. The city could use the money. The city could use the money. But do we need the money? And if we need it, what do we need it for? If we look at our current proposed budget that we're going to be voting on here in the not-too-distant future, the mayor's office will get $148,534 additional dollars. What's that going to go for? City council will get an additional $79,442. Personally, I'd like to give that to Clerk Walker. The police department will get $747,067 more per year. Will that be to hire new officers? New cars? The fire department, $654,945 additional they will get. Lands and buildings, $147,757. Will that be so we can pull the weeds out of the bricks on Union Street so that a local businessperson doesn't have to do it? I don't know. And these are the questions the voters are asking. What is it going to go for? So council's job is to either, no, council's job is to vote on something. But what do we vote on? I see four options. We can vote on the proposal that's been presented to us, a 15.38% increase. Put that on the ballot, and the voters can decide, because ultimately, it's their choice. We could, as the speaker suggested, put a lesser amount on the ballot and match that to a certain extent with belt-tightening measures. We could put on a property tax. On advantage of a property tax, all the residents of the City of Athens would pay it, because we all do use the services, the police, the fire, the roads. According to Auditor Jill Thompson, we would have to levy about five mils. And I distributed to all members of council that, that, that email and what that amount would be. We could put a lesser property tax on and take some cost-cutting measures. Well, the fifth option, and it's not difficult, would be a combination property tax and income tax. It's not hard to put a tax levy on the ballot. The paperwork can be prepared in a very, very short period of time, simply waiting for council's approval to place it on there. I don't know which one of those I prefer. But again, the city could use the money. Do we need it? And if we do, what are we going to use it for? I think those are things we need to, as a group, discuss and figure the best path forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Other members, council? Oh, Member McCary.
Thank you. I appreciate Member Swank's breakdown of those options, and have been considering some of the equity issues that have come up in past meetings as well, when it comes to potentially retired folks who are not receiving that kind of income, having to, or not having the opportunity to contribute to this. And then thinking about property tax, not everyone is a property owner. But I suppose I'm curious also about the timing of a levy, and recognizing that May might be a difficult time to get a lot of voter engagement, and hoping council will consider also some of these different combinations that Member Swank is laying out there for us, which I think should include looking at those belt-tightening measures to determine exactly what combination of these different tax options and cost-saving measures we can explore in 2025.
Member Hottfelder?
Perhaps for the benefit of people watching, or people who have not been party to our previous discussions about this, there are two different numbers being used. There's the .3% increase, and then there's a 15% increase. Could someone please explain that to the public? Why, why people have, have, are talking about a 15% increase? Maybe the treasurer?
.3 is 15% of 1.95.
Oh, thank you. Okay.
Member Swank?
Yeah, one thing that the Director Stone shared with us last week, which was very valuable, this, I'll just hold it up here, this chart. And one of the things it focused on was the, the percentage of our income tax withholding that came from Ohio University. In 2008, it was 42%. In 2023, it was 29%. And when I got home last Monday night, I shared that with my wife, and we were both shocked, because this essentially is a one-horse town. And I'm thinking, wow, this, this isn't sustainable. What's going to happen? And then today, it dawned on me, that's not really a problem. Now, why is it not a problem? In 2008, Ohio University withholding was $5.482 million. The rest of the withholding in the city was $7.618 million, for a total of about $13 million. 42% of that $13 million came from Ohio University. Jump ahead, 2023, Ohio University's withholding, $4.935 million. About $500,000 less than in 2008. But the other withholding in the city, $11.884 million, a difference of almost $7 million. Our economy is beginning to diversify in this town, and that's a good thing. And that's why, when we look at the figures that Treasurer Thomas shared with us, withholding from 2023 to 2024, year-to-date, and I realize that is a small sample, as Solvee pointed out to me today, you can take two data points and make them say whatever you want, but that's a 5.99% increase. Our withholding is going up. Now, will that continue? Who knows? But things weren't as bleak as I thought they were when I left here on last Monday night, in terms of OU's percentage of the withholding for the City of Athens. And it was also pointed out to me today, the new administration, the new president of Ohio University, is doing us a big favor, where she is directing, as best I can tell, upper-level administrators to be on campus working, as opposed to working from Florida, not paying the city income tax. And that's a positive, which means, Mikey, you gotta go in all five days to be in the office. But, yeah, I left here last Monday night, just 42 to 29%. I was freaking out, to use a 70s term. But it looks like our economy is diversifying, and if we can continue to attract, we're going to talk about some rental property, maybe going in later here today, you know, it may not be that bad. So I guess my point is, we can use the money, but what are we going to use it for? And what's the most appropriate way to raise that money? And I appreciate comments from that side of the dais.
Oh, Member Wood?
Yeah, um, I am interested in, uh, maybe I misunderstood, but what I was hearing earlier from the treasurer was that our, our income on the whole is actually increasing. It looks like we're projected to continue increasing overall. And if, if that's accurate with, without the, the sales tax, but the changes, because it looks like we're increasing.
So that is true. We are. You know, the sales, the, our income tax has gone up 4.9%. What we need to remember, though, is, we were presented with a report from the State of Ohio, the auditor, and one of our areas was, our income is not in, in line with our expenses. Our expenses are on the rise more than our income. That was why we were in the yellow. So that was one of the things that they said we should address. So that's where this has come from, you know? We need to address that, that we have to look at, look at, how are we going to generate more revenue for the city? I did a little research on this. Not exactly my lane, but I felt it was just something I wanted to look into, you know, just to look at. So if you indulge me for a minute, and I think this might answer a few of the questions that Mary had as well. The first thing that I just wanted to just say on this is, to remember how our incomes, how we're structured already. Just a little reminder, we bring in our income tax, our total income tax, and then we have to take out four level levis, right, from the start? Okay? So before we can do anything else with that money, we have to take out a levy for our street improvement fund, 572, arts, parks, and rec, the fire station levy, and the community center operation. A couple of these levis are time-related, they will expire in a certain number of years. The community center is ongoing. Street improvements, we have approved two times already. We've renewed it two times already. Probably something we'll renew a third time, again. These are important levis. We have to do this, by law. These are the first things that come off the top. We have to do this by law. These are the first things that come off the top. So again, as our income tax comes in, easy way to look at it, we bring in a hundred dollars worth of income, right? Just keep a hundred dollars in your brain. We're gonna peel off seventeen dollars and, uh, ninety-five cents, I think, right from the start to pay for these first four levies. From there, now we're talking about what is now our general obligation revenue, okay? We're no longer talking about total ta- income tax revenue. This is now our general obligation revenue. Okay, we, we paid for the first four things. We already have an ordinance in place, to Mary's point. We already have an ordinance in place that tells us how we're gonna divide up some of that money right from the start. Okay? Street fund, uh, or I'm sorry, general fund receives, uh, the large portion, seventy-two point five percent of that goes to the general fund. Street fund receives fourteen point five percent, recreation receives eight percent. The capital improvements fund is gonna receive two percent. Transportation assist fund, we just talked about that, Fund Two fourteen, they receive one percent, and our medical fund receives two percent. When you look at these, these funds, obviously, we know these costs are going to continue to increase. Medical costs not gonna go down anytime soon. If you guys have any evidence that medical costs are gonna go down, let us know. We just heard from the transit people. Are their costs going down? Nope, they're not going down either. So again, when you look at the recreation, it's gonna keep going up. Street fund, is it getting any cheaper to renovate streets? No. So again, and then when you go to the general fund, when you look at your budget, what's the highest expense we have in general fund?
Personnel.
Personnel, right? Do you know anybody that wants to take a pay cut in the next year or two? I don't. We have union contracts in place. How many? Four of them. Union contracts in place, signed and done. Increases are gonna happen. We have, we can't do anything about that. We have no choice. Those increases are gonna happen, along with those increases would be medical funds. So again, when you look at those things, we know the, the, the expenses are gonna keep coming. The state of Ohio told us this past year, your expenses are gonna keep coming. You know, they know this, we know this. So again, we had to come up with some sort of a plan. We gotta figure out what we're gonna do. We have not increased what I'm gonna call our general obligation revenue since two thousand seventeen. We did put a one percent increase on our income tax to pay for a fire station, right? And that's what I mentioned in one of those first four, that, and that's a bond that is, uh, what was it, twenty years? So that'll be done in twenty years. Our, our swimming pool bond is coming up for renewal. We're gonna try to renegotiate that so it's done a little faster. Again, but those, those are the first four. Our general obligation revenue is what we really need to focus on. So again, you, you mentioned options. So kind of again, as a little project for myself, I wanted to look into these. So your two options are income tax increase or, you know, a property tax. So the income tax, suggested point three percent. Obviously, we all know the process. You're gonna approve. The residents are gonna vote. If approved, we were hoping to bring in almost two point six million dollars. Then, we already have the structure in place. As Mary asked, what does this two point six go to? How's it gonna do? It's already done. Ordinance zero two one two one has that in place for us, that we know exactly what we're gonna do with the bulk of that money. Now, a lot of it might go to the general fund still. To give you an idea on that, we're in these numbers as well, just so you guys are up to speed with the two point two five increase. Those funds, you would see an increase in the general fund of one point five million dollars. You're gonna see the street fund's gonna get three hundred thousand, recreation, we get a hundred and sixty-nine thousand, capital's gonna get forty-two thousand, transportation, we could increase by about twenty-one thousand, medical fund forty-two thousand. Again, that's what the increase would be in that two point five million dollars, you know, hopefully that's how we're gonna break it all down. So again, just to give you those numbers. Considerations, when you talk about income tax, and again, these are things I've talked with, we, we, the auditor and I actually had a phone call with some of our legal counsel just to get, they're not allowed to give us advice, but to just give us the, the facts. What are you talking about? You know? The considerations for this is, it is pretty easy for taxpayers to understand. Mary's done the math for us, you know, any, anybody can basically do that math. If you take your taxable income, you multiply it by point zero zero three, that's gonna give you your increases, what you would pay every, every year. And again, maybe you get a, a pay increase, that's great, you would pay a little bit more. Again, like I mentioned, the city, it's, which should be considered, that we haven't seen an increase like this since two thousand seventeen. I think it's also, um, also Director Stone, in his last report, we are, you know, I, and, and when you look at the averages for city of our size, we're just a little below the, I think, the average. Most of the cities our size were two or better. So I think that's important to understand too, that this isn't something that we're just doing out of the blue. Our, our, our legal, you know, people we talked to, they said, you know, this is really the, the most widely-used, um, way of, of increasing funds for a city. What this also does is it captures revenue that, um, we mentioned Ohio University. It captures revenue from Ohio University by the employees that work there, correct? Why is that important? They're pretty heavy users of our services. Our fire runs, how, what's our percentage going to Ohio University? Forty-five percent of our fire runs are going to Ohio University. So again, and that number has continued to go up year after year after year. So again, we have a pretty hefty user there. It would be nice to get some sort of funding back from them in that sense. Whereas, as I mentioned in a minute, as a property tax, we have to keep in mind, Ohio University pays zero property tax. So again, all these fire runs are making, it, a property tax, you say, okay, as property owners, we're gonna support this, support this funding. We're gonna be supporting funding that a lot of the fu- a lot of the things we're supporting are gonna be going to Ohio University to service them. So again, the income tax sort of puts it in, in place. The other way to look at it too is, let's just say it's spring, it's nice, we go down to the pickleball courts. How much money do we spend on pickleball courts? A lot, right? How much do we spend on soccer fields? A lot. Go to those fields, go to those anytime. Ask around, how many are, how many are property owners in the city of Athens? And how many are people that actually drove into the city of Athens from the plains or from our neighboring communities to use these things? Same thing, go to the swimming pool in the middle of the summer. How many of those kids you think are living in the city of Athens and how many are coming from the plains? And how many are coming from Gloucester and coming from all our neighboring communities? Especially if we can have a bus service that helps them get here. So again, not all those people might work in Athens, but again, it pulls the outer communities, our, our adjacent communities, it pulls from them as well who are also using our city services. This is common in every city you go to, right? Most cities are gonna have a higher income tax because they are support, they're providing the bulk of the things that people want. People are gonna drive into the city to do the things that they wanna do. They're gonna use the roads, they're gonna use the services. If you have a traffic accident on East State Street, city police is gonna come. They're not gonna ask you if you're a property owner, they're just gonna take care of you, right? Same thing with fire. It's important to note too, our fire department, if there's a big fire in the plains, how many trucks do we spend? All of them, right? We support them. So again, plains people, they're not paying property tax in Athens, but we're still gonna support them. We're still gonna send our services there because we are the major thing here going on. So it's nice to be able, if there's people in the plains, and we assume for the most part that a lot of people that live in the plains are probably working in Athens. We assume, that way, you know, we get a little bit, something from them. Speaking about the property tax thing, I think you've already found, Member Swank, you probably looked in this too. There's two types of property taxes. There's the inside millage, under ten, and then the outside millage. City of Athens has no inside millage basically left to capture. Inside millage, if it was under ten, wouldn't even be voted on. It would just be something that could be asked for. The county budget commission would have to approve it, um, and go through that, but it could just be asked for. There isn't hardly anything available, wouldn't really get us much. So we're talking about an outside millage, which would be voted on, you'd have to put it on the ballot and would be voted on. Same kind of process we go through it. Again, your numbers are correct, five mils is exactly what we'd be asking for. The city residents would vote on it. It could also bring us in the money we need. But a second step that would have to happen then is if we do bring in this from property tax. Right now, property taxes just goes right to the general fund, just sits there. There's no structure in place that says, where are we spending it? Now, that's not a hard thing to do, but we would, I would think that council and the auditor's office together, we would wanna create an ordinance that would then specify, where's this money going, right? It's coming in, we're bringing in all this extra money. We really don't want this in a pot. We wanna make sure it gets divided up. So that would be an extra step that would have to go later in the process to make sure that we're, you know, we're, we're, uh, kind of dividing that money up the way we want. The considerations, like I say, when we talk to other people about this is, you know, one, more than anything, they definitely suggested making sure we consult legal counsel on, on a property tax, it's just to make sure you have everything right. Property tax, the other thing we have to consider is, properties taxes are shared, right? They're shared by everybody. I live in, I live right in here in town. If I'm now paying more, this would actually put on my property, well, let's just have a little fun with this, if I was talking about it. To give you guys an idea, what this would do to our property, this is all public information, you can find it easily on, on the county auditor's website. All of us sitting in this room. If you take our properties and you look at the, the value that they assess the taxes on, we, we, all of us in this room have an average of a hundred and six thousand eight hundred thirty-nine dollars of property value. That means on average, we would all pay five hundred and thirty-four dollars more. The highest person in this room would actually pay eight hundred and sixty-four dollars more per year. The lowest person would pay two hundred and ninety-two dollars a year. Again, I just looked up all of us elected officials, easy to do on the county website. So to give you an idea, in my mind, just a modest home somewhere in the city of Athens is gonna end up probably paying about five hundred dollars more per year in this property tax, in those five mils. What if the city, what if the school district, Member Swank, comes along and says, we'd like to put a, put something on the, on the levy too. But maybe the city of Athens, maybe we've, we're successful, we've already passed ours. Now, as a property owner, am I a little hesitant on this school thing? Because, man, I'm already paying another five hundred dollars a year on my property. What's the school asking for now? What if the library wants another levy? What if the EMS levy, when the EMS levy comes up for renewal? Now, we're talking more decisions because more people have their hands on property taxes. When you look at the, what it is, the county, the school district, the township, and the, in the city, we all have a portion of property taxes. We all have a right to ask for more. But we are putting in the other entities in a tough position. What I'm saying is actually it kind of almost turns these other entities a little bit against us if we try to do a property tax, because they may say, well, we might have, we had some, we, we, we just heard them say they were gonna do a, a sales tax levy. You know, if another entity wants to come along with a, with a levy of their own, it might put them in a tough position if we're competing against them. Which again, when you talk to, uh, our, our legal counsel, he said, that's basically why property tax levies are very rarely used for what you would wanna call city general obligations. A property tax levy would be used more for, again, kind of like our fire station, something that's a time limit, like we, we borrowed money, it's a set amount of money. We're gonna do a property tax levy, but then it's gonna fall off in ten years, much like schools do. They'll say, we're gonna build a new school, you're gonna pay for it over the next ten years, and then that's gonna fall off. So again, it would be more of a time limit thing. So that's why again, usually they, they would, you know, municipalities go with more of an income tax levy for that reason. Another consideration, when you talk about property tax, is property taxes go up kind of every year. I mean, that's the one thing I think most people in Athens have talked about over probably the last four to five years, is, man, every year my property tax has gone up. Because the other factor is, they reevaluate your property every so many years too. So the value goes up, so you, you know, that continues to go up as well. So that's just something to think about and to be considerate of. Can it be a little bit more difficult for the voters to understand? When you say we're adding five mils, there's a lot of people out there that don't really understand what five mils means. Now, credit the auditor's website, the county auditor. If a, if a levy does get on the ballot, uh, Auditor Thompson, or Davidson, sorry, has a great website, that she will put that on there, that you can usually go and see exactly what that's gonna cost you. But again, when you talk about mils and stuff, it gets a little bit more confusing for people as opposed to just a straight percentage on their income. So that just may, that's just one thing to think about. And again, just to go back to it, what you would not be really capturing is anything from Ohio University in a property tax. Again, they don't pay property taxes. In a conversation with Auditor Davidson, you may have had the same conversation, Member Swank, is, you know, we all complain about property taxes in Athens, and in Athens County in general. But as she noted, it's important to say that about one-third of the property, and especially here in the city of Athens, is not taxed. You know, so to have all the services that we want to have, um, or that we, we're accustomed to having, let's say that, and that we wanna continue to have, you've got to have that income coming in, whether it's through property taxes or through an income tax. So again, that's just a little of the research that I've done on it. You know, my goal was just to sort of present the facts as to what I have found, um, what, what I've talked to people about. You know, i- if you're wanting an opinion from me, my opinion is still the income tax, I think is, is, I mean, it's just what, what we've done over all the years, it's what most municipalities do themselves. It does capture revenue from the, you know, from the outside areas that do use our city services and rely on us to have these city services. Again, we just had a presentation about people who live outside this area that need to get to Athens and want to get to Athens, probably maybe for their job, right? So again, how do we support that if we're not able to do anything? As we're tightening the belt, cutting the budget, just from my perspective, we were presented a budget, I think you even made the comment, Member Swank, that on most categories in that budget, we are lower than we were in two thousand and twenty, the budget was presented for two thousand twenty-four, at this time last year. A lot of those categories are lower. The highest, what has gone up is personnel. The auditor, the deputy auditor wanted to make clear that everybody understands, a large chunk of that personnel cost, you know it again, is health is the medical cost, and it's gonna be workers' comp cost also. Just to remind everybody, as a business owner myself in, here in Athens, it was great. For years and years, the state of Ohio, the Bureau of Workers' Comp had this huge pool of money that they didn't know what to do with. So they basically refunded everybody back their premiums. They would say, hey, you don't have to pay workers' comp this year. You would pay it. You'd pay it every month, and then at the end of the year, they would basically give it right back to you, and it was wonderful. City of Athens benefited from that for I don't know how many years. We don't benefit from that anymore, which means we pay a large chunk of money. Today was just sharing with me, like, the workers' comp for one fireperson, right, is about five thousand dollars every year that has to go out for workers' comp. So that's, you know, multiply that by the fire, the police, all the people that have to pay into that, that's a big chunk of money. It's not gonna go down, right? Again, personnel costs are not gonna go down, they're only gonna keep going up, so. Nobody likes to raise, to, to put it in a, a business perspective, Member Thomas couldn't be here tonight, unfortunately her flight got messed up, her and I run a business. If we were still charging two thousand seventeen prices in two thousand and twenty-four, we do not have a business. We're done. We would have been done a few years ago, for sure. Unfortunately, it's just the reality of, of life. We've dealt with a huge increase in inflation. Things cost more, and they cost more for the city too. I mean, it's not that the city gets a break on, on anything. We pay the same prices that everybody else does. So, you know, I, I know that we don't wanna consider ourselves a business, you know, we are, we are, we're not that, but at the same time, if our revenue doesn't increase at a steady rate, we're gonna be struggling, and there will be, there will be belt tightening. You know, examples of that would be, in talking with the auditor, you know, examples would be personnel, because that's our biggest cost. And I don't think that's something, I know it's not something I wanna have to do. And I don't think any council members here wanna have to say, hey, two firefighters or two policemen, we're just gonna have to do without. Because, you know, we just, you know, we didn't wanna put this on the ballot. The last one I would make is, I know, I had considered two, could you do both? Could you do a, a property tax and an income tax? You could probably try and work that out. The only problem with that is, I feel like then you're asking the voters for two things. And you gotta make really sure that the voters understand that we're not asking for double. We're just trying to match one number, right? We're trying to raise two point five. If we start asking for two things, I think that gets pretty confusing in the voters' mind that, wait a minute, we just voted to give you something right here on the ballot, and now you want something here on the ballot as well? Again, I like to keep it simple. That's, that's, that's my thought on it. And that's, we, and all the, all the little bit of research that I've done, most municipalities like to keep it simple as well. That's my take. I'm done. I'll get off my soapbox. That's just all the research that I've tried to do on this. You know, again, this was not something I was asked to do, it was sort of my pet project that I just, to learn a little bit more for myself, so I kind of dove in and went after it.
Thank you, auditor.
Your word.
Treasurer, I'm sorry.
Again, I really, and I wanna be clear, the auditor is visiting, her grandson, in, in California, right? But this is something Auditor Heck and I worked on together. We did a lot of this work together, we were on phone calls together, working with emails together, you know, this was not just me, we, we were working together doing all this.
Member Wood?
Well, um, thanks. I didn't think I was gonna get a TED Talk.
Sorry.
If I don't, then we're gonna do, you know, uh, that.
I enjoyed it.
I would've saved the question. Yeah, so I think we all like having more services and we like having, uh, the increases, and that's important. The, the, we were all there at the fire station opening and those things are great, I think. Consider myself probably in the tax and spend liberal group, uh, of everybody. And, uh, didn't think my property taxes were gonna be, have broadcast either. But, uh, the, yeah, I think, I think that's part of the, the case that we are trying to figure out, what those things would be. Obviously, the mayor isn't here to answer that. Like what the, what the, what the things would be that we're paying for. Director Stone said last week something along the lines of, like, we wouldn't see a major change right off, but long-term, we would see a drop in services. I think those are important parts of the story. I also think that the, uh, I would like to, maybe we could propose something that would be means-tested, um, maybe a higher increase on higher-income earners as opposed to, um, across the board. That way, it wouldn't be, um, sort of this, this, uh, thing, a hundred and fifty bucks for somebody making twenty thousand is a lot more than, of that larger cost for a property owner. So something that would maybe be a, uh, graduated income tax would maybe be more palatable. Again, I just come back to, we've heard a million think pieces since the election about the cost of eggs and all this. And so I support having more services for the city, I support having more- Um, and so, I support having more services for the city, I support having more staff, and I think if this is the way to do it, then, then, you know, fine. I think that, that part of the argument just needs to be made. Um, and it would be great to have something to be a little more, um, again, uh, means-tested or, or would impact higher earners more than folks at the bottom end of the scale. So that would be my two cents.
Thank you, Member Wood. Member, uh, Solveg?
Oh, go ahead, I'm sorry, she beat you by three seconds.
She's always been quick.
Thank you. Um, first of all, I wanted to thank Mary for her in-depth look at everything, and I think that's really a responsible place to be, and I, I really appreciate your thinking. I think those questions, you know, I hope you've gotten answers to some of them, perhaps not all of them. Um, and, you know, I think it is worthy to look at, are we doing some belt buckling? Like, um, uh, Member Swank mentioned, that's, that's all good and well. Remember when we were in 2020 and that, that whole era? We lost a lot of money because of people working from home and whatnot, and we have to recover from that, and I think that's an important piece of this. Um, so I wanted to throw that out. The other thing is that, um, you know, we are a tourist destination, and having traveled a little bit around, uh, this last year, and looking at lodging taxes in other cities, they're a lot higher than ours. And I'm wondering if that might be another avenue that we could... I mean, I looked at Cleveland, it's, uh, 6.5, Columbus is 5, we're at 3, at least according to my Google searches. Um, and perhaps that could add a little bit to our coffers, and maybe be creative in some other ways. So, anyway, just throwing out some thoughts.
Member Swank?
Couple of things. I had the same idea, can't do it. O R C says city income tax have to be a set percent regardless of one's income, which makes it a highly regressive tax, which is another argument in favor of maybe a lesser amount or a combination of the two. Terms of the lodging tax, I've actually had this discussion with, uh, Director Stone. Uh, those cities are actually 9.5, 10, and 10.5, Cincinnati, Cleveland, and Columbus, when you take the entire lodging tax. We may have missed the window of opportunity to do that, it may have expired in 2017, but we may have, uh, Sunday Creek Horizons take a look at that and perhaps lobby on our behalf, but that would be a significant increase. Uh, appreciate the research, you and I are both kind of data people, and that makes a lot of sense. There is one thing I haven't mentioned here that does scare me a little bit, if we don't do this. Just recently, the House Pension Committee voted 12 to 3 to raise the contribution for Police Retirement Fund from 19.5 to 24. Fire would stay where it is, 24. The argument is that they haven't done, which we, we often use, that it hasn't been raised in almost 40 years. So we have to be careful with that, you know, you use it for or you use it against, but, uh, there, there is some, uh, there is some, I do have some concern if that goes through, what that number will be in terms of our, our pension thing. As I understand this, if we put this on the ballot in May and it passes, it would begin being collected January 1st of 2026?
Whatever.
Okay. Couldn't do it right in July, because we would be asking all kinds of businesses to change their withholding and all of that, which does give people some time to prepare. I'm wondering two things. I didn't mention this option. Because we can't predict the future, and you alluded to this with school levies, that are generally for a period of time, except here in Athens, and all of ours are permanent now. Uh, I'm not sure, talk about the voters not knowing what they're voting for, we just, uh, gave away our right to vote for the rest of our lives here on those. Um, making this a levy for a limited period of time, subject to renewal, so that we can see what's going to transpire, and when entities do that, let's say it's a five-year levy, generally what they do is, in a year before it expires, they put it up again, just in case it doesn't fail, or just in case it, it, it fails, they can come back. But I'm all for accountability. And if we make this a forever levy, and all of a sudden we're just sitting real ripe, which would be nice, does that make us good stewards of the public's money? Do we spend it because we have it? Or do we spend it because we really need to spend it on things? So I would be in favor, you know, if we, if we're going to end up going this income tax route, 15.38%, do it for a limited period of time. Again, another consideration. Long as we can get this to the Board of Elections across the street by the first Monday in February, we're good. So, I think we all need to talk to our constituents, talk to each other as we can, as appropriate by sunshine laws, and come up with the, uh, the thing that's, uh, most prudent for the citizens who pay it, but for the city to operate and offer the services that we currently offer.
Member McCary?
Thank you. I do appreciate Member Swank's suggestion that we consider those alternative means of raising funds, and I'm also thinking about questions that came up earlier about if we introduce the levy and it doesn't pass, what would the, um, what would our Plan B be? We recognize that we would eventually see a reduction in some sort of services or, um, perhaps improvements of infrastructure, but I am thinking specifically about a failure to pass a levy in May. Do we attempt another, uh, levy, or do we try something again, um, in November? Can anyone just let me know what might be the Plan B if a levy was approved, but, uh, not by the voters? Perhaps based on what we've done historically, when we've attempted to raise income tax and maybe not had the support of the public?
They've all passed.
They've all passed.
Yeah, we're batting a thousand.
This just seems a little challenging for me, because it's, uh, it's not something as clear-cut as one fire station or some, uh, new thing that people are going to want. It's a little more nuanced, and the past, uh, is influencing where we are economically. Um, so I guess I'm just starting to think about Plan B if the, uh, income tax was not approved by voters.
Does the administration like to, uh, comment on that?
You know, the one thing that I, I would say is, is that, you know, um, because it's not a levy for a specific thing, um, it isn't as tangible as, you know, if this doesn't pass, then we don't get this community center, or something along those lines. You know, the Street Rehab Levy is pretty straightforward. We use that one for matching a lot of the state and federal money, uh, that we get, and so a lot of the big infrastructure projects that we've done over the last 20 years, we've done because we have that revenue, uh, coming in, and we've been able to leverage it for eight times as much money in, in state and federal funds. Um, that said, this is general obligation, right? And so, if it doesn't pass, it'll be an exercise in, uh, priorities, in saying what is, what's a priority and what's not a priority, and we'll, and we'll have a, we'll have a healthy discussion about that. I just had a discussion with a firefighter today about the economy of Athens is not growing as fast as the costs of Athens. And so, yes, I want to add firefighters, I absolutely do. Do I have less policemen to do that? Do I do less recreation activities with our parks to do that? I mean, it's, it's an exercise in priorities, and so, if it fails in May, um, then I will come up with a couple of different scenarios over the ensuing five years based on some projections of what we, um, what we've seen now, to, to, to try to make it at least a little bit more tangible, which might mean we, we don't do this, or don't do this, or don't do this, or don't do this, but it'll still be an exercise in priorities um, for the administration, whoever's sitting in, in, at this table, whenever those decisions have to be made, and, and whoever is sitting on that dais.
Thank you. Thank you. Members, Solveg?
Thank you. Okay, so, um, one of the things that we hear complaints about fairly often is lack of communication. And so, I, I think, especially since it's not, if we're going to be doing this, since it's not going to be a firehouse that's really tangible, I think we have to be really careful about providing as much information to the public and being clear about why it's important, and not making it this sort of nebulous thing out there. So I think that will do us some great favors. Um, I mean, there's other people besides Mary who are interested in these kinds of things, and, uh, I know, since I represent the First Ward, we have quite a few people who are low-income and, uh, you know, get really upset about any increases. And I want to make sure that we do the best we can, and that I, or any of us on City Council will be able to explain to our constituents in a very clear way why it's important to increase taxes. So I, I don't think I can overemphasize that.
Member Swank?
Director Stone, correct me on this if I'm wrong, in regards to what Solveg just said. As elected officials, we cannot campaign for this levy. We can give information.
Right.
But we cannot campaign for it. If we are governed by the same rules that elected school board members are when it comes to levies, all those meetings they had about the new high school were informational meetings, uh, and school board members cannot campaign, and I'm assuming the same would apply to us.
I, I think you're correct, I think it, uh, you're a little freer than, say, for instance, I am.
Yes, sir.
So, so, I mean, as a, as an employee, uh, you know, we are absolutely forbidden to, to advocate.
Yeah, Dr. Gibbs was in that position as an employee of the district.
But I think you are freer, but I think it's probably a better question to, uh, to pose to council as opposed to, to me, when it relates to election.
Just to add, remember Thomas couldn't be here. I was given one specific thing to say if, if it came up, and that is, and that is what you just said, is that her only opinion is, no matter what we do, is that the public is informed 100% why we're doing it. Not necessarily campaigning, campaigning, but giving the information as to what we're doing. In this particular situation, I mean, I, I think, when you look at our budget, we're going to have that discussion, too, here coming up. We're talking police and fire, is a lot of the bulk of what we're, of what we're supporting here.
54%.
We keep coming back to that, you know, so again, when people ask, you know, what, what is this money going for? You know, a lot of it's police and fire. I mean, that's just, again, with the contracts that are in place, and again, with the pension thing that's trying to go through, that's, that's a lot of what we're really trying to accomplish here. Nobody, let me put it this way, the treasurer's office is not going to get a makeover anytime soon. So, you know, I mean, it, it, it's just important to note that, but that was just, that was the one thing that I was, said, hey, this is something that she wanted to make clear.
Member McCary?
Thank you. Uh, to Treasurer Thomas's point, I, I suppose I'm finding it important that we maybe clarify what the consequences do not better financing our police and firefighters would have. So I think it's difficult for the general public to know, this is how many police officers we have, uh, this is how much we need to pay them in order to retain them, this is how, um, this is how if we reduced our police force by two officers, services would be impacted in pretty serious ways, so I'm thinking if we can point to some of those challenges, that would be helpful.
Member Wood?
Or even better, you know, the positive sides of it. I mean, again, I'm, I'm a pretty easy sell on this. Typically, I'm the person that would be the, the first on board, you know? Um, and so I think more, like Solveg was saying, any of the positive things we can carry forward, um, that would come from it, uh, great, you know? Um, or not carried forward, because we're not campaigning, depending on whatever the guidance is from our council. Uh, but yeah, I think that's, that, that would be good, too, like something positive to, to offer up if you're going to ask people to do it. I don't think it should just be doom and gloom, but ideally, we're, we're, you know, we're in a community that clearly supports the income taxes in general, banning a thousand, et cetera. Um, we are in a community that, that appreciates those services, likes having good services, and et cetera. So I think people would be receptive if they had clear, positive reasons, you know, that, that we're going to, you know, things we're going to increase into. So that would be my, again, I, I, um, yeah.
Thank you. I think we can wrap this discussion up at this point. Um, we will have a first reading of the proposed ordinance and resolution in our next regular session next week, at that time, the suggestions and amendments and so on can be considered. The discussion doesn't end here, I'm sure it's going to drag on all the way to the very last meeting and the last vote, so, which is good. Maybe what we have before us can be improved, or even made better. Okay. Yes.
Just a general comment.
Acting Mayor, uh, Ralph, yes?
Thank you, just for Mr. Leatherwood, just to make sure that he understands, um, if you are interested in speaking to the Pomeroy issue of zoning, it's not on the agenda tonight, and there's no open comment period at a committee meeting. So we welcome your participation, but, okay, as long as you know.
Probably over two weeks.
I have no idea, he just came here.
Probably over two weeks.
Uh, let's see, next, uh, Finance and Personnel Committee will meet here at the dais. Other members can go to the audience. So if, uh, Member McCary, Wood, and Quadfelter remain, I will also, since I'm chair. And the first item of two is reduce 2024 year-end appropriations. I think all members of the committee received a, um, a copy of last year's ordinance on this. This is something we do every year, ever since I've been with council, 10, 11 years, it's always come up. Uh, but the auditor asks for permission to reduce appropriations and... Do we have a copy of that? The auditor is hereby authorized to reduce 2024 appropriations where anticipated receipts are not adequate, and when combined with the forward care, uh, carrying forward balance not sufficient, to approve the full appropriations of funds. Essentially, the auditor adjusts the budget to make it balance at the very end. So it's just pretty much a bookkeeping ordinance that has to be done. Otherwise, state auditors might come down on us and, you know, do terrible things. Any comments from the audience about this ordinance? From admin, treasurer, substitute auditor? No, no, okay. Now, members of the committee, any comments? Member McCary?
Thank you. I will just ask if perhaps the treasurer or someone else might be able to give an example of some of the areas where we expected to spend, where we perhaps, uh, didn't, and will be putting that money back.
I don't have that, you have that, sure, sure. Um, an example would be a, um, like, say, a personnel fund line where a position was not filled for a portion of the year, and that transaction class and that fund has that money in it. Uh, if we know that we're not going to spend it between now and the end of the year, uh, we can go ahead and draw, draw down money there, that's one example. Um, another example, uh, for what, what we do here would be, um, you know, there's a particular revenue stream that goes into a special fund somewhere. We appropriate all of that money. An example would be, uh, say, for instance, um, um, seizure money from, from, uh, law enforcement activities, and, you know, that's real specific, what that can be spent on, and where, where that comes from, you know, in a, in a, um, in a court case. And if, for some reason, um, not enough came in to, to, um, fill what was appropriated at the beginning of the year, then this allows the auditor to reduce that to the amount that came in. This is really a bookkeeping exercise, so that when December 31st comes around, um, that some of the work is already done, because the auditor's office, it's a very heavy lift during that, that year-end period, you're probably familiar with the state, state budget at Ohio University, that heavy lift that happens at the end of June, going into the beginning of July to close the books and reopen them. This is a step to get us, um, started, so that all the work isn't, you know, after Christmas, before New Year's.
Makes a lot of sense. Thank you.
Any other comments on this? Okay. Uh, our next item, and last for Finance and Personnel, is the ASME Local 24032 Code tentative agreement. Um, the contract has already been negotiated, it's been, um, approved by the rank and file of the union and the administration. So it's up for council then to finally make an approval of it. This will come forward next week, final thing. How many pages is that?
Current contract is 42 pages.
42 pages, that's, that's light reading then, okay. I think this is our last contract in this cycle, and then next year, we start over with... What's coming up next year?
Police coming up next year.
Police, okay.
Uh, it could be fire, I gotta, I gotta double-check, I always get it mixed up, which is, which is which.
Okay. Any comments on the, Member Wood, anything? McCary, Quadfelter? No? Okay, that concludes Finance.
Member Eisner?
Yes.
If I can, if I can just give a couple of notes.
Yes, please.
On the specifics of the contract, um, um, you know, basically, I took my guidance from a, a couple of contracts ago from this body, you know, we will sit down in an executive session from time to time and, and talk about, um, the, the barber poles that we have as we go into negotiations, understanding what they were from previous contracts. This one, we negotiated very much.
understanding what they were from previous contracts. This one, we negotiated very much the same way. So, you know, there is a little synopsis, I think, that we sent out. I don't know, do they have, do they have that? And these are the major changes within this particular contract, very much in line with what ASME 2403 won, which we just passed here not that long ago, was negotiated. I think the, the key thing to note going forward is we've gone through a period of adjustments in order to account for inflation, you know. And so we've negotiated higher raises in the last contract with each of our four bargaining units due to the inflationary pressures that have been on people, as they, you know, bought milk and eggs and gas and everything else that they bought over the, over the last several years. As Member Reisner mentioned, this is the end of that cycle. So I think the next level of negotiations, we're going to be back to kind of historic colas associated with that as inflation has kind of gone back down. And so, you know, those might be harder negotiations, although these are hard, just like they're always hard because, you know, people will always try to negotiate for as much as they can, and the city always tries to keep it, you know, reasonable. But like I said, and I just want to say it publicly, that we're going to have to, we're going to have to, you know, step on the brakes some now after we've done one cycle to, to make these adjustments for inflation, so.
Thank you. Good, good information. So, no further comments on this issue. That concludes Finance Personnel Committee. Next coming up is City and Safety Services. And that is chaired by Member McCary with Members Reisner, Thomas, and Swank. We're one member short.
Thank you, President Protem. I'll go ahead and begin our City and Safety Services agenda with the first and only item, water line replacement, Factory Street. This is an opportunity to improve a crucial water line, get it replaced. Ohio University is building a new HCOM Heritage College of Osteopathic Medicine Research Building at the corner of Station and Factory Street. And as part of the work, they will be doing some underground utilities on Factory. I know that this is an opportunity to create some additional connections for our water system, and we'll ask Director Andy Stone if you would like to provide additional information.
So there's a 12-inch main on Union Street. There's a 14-inch main that runs right beside the OU Central Heating Plant through where the filling, the fuel station is in that area. And currently, there is a line on Factory Street, but it doesn't interconnect those two larger lines that I mentioned. It, it kind of comes down and stops. This project will be done by the contractor. It was actually bid by Ohio University as an alternate for their HCOM project. And, and then they gave us the option to, to do it or not. And then we would just pay Ohio University, and then they would pay their contractor to do that. And it's to build a 10-inch water line that interconnects Union Street and that, our, our Big 14, which is kind of like our aorta that goes to the south side. And so this gives us another loop on the system, which is good to be able to provide continuity of service. We have a break in, in a couple of different places. We're excited about that. It also does away with a, a pretty old water line. So I put this money in the budget, so it already sits in the 2025 budget under the Transaction Class 500s for Water Maintenance. All I'm asking you to do with this ordinance is authorize the expenditure, since the expenditure is greater than $75,000. Doesn't need to be bid. Ohio University already bid it as part of the, the HCOM project. Thank you, Member McCary.
Thank you, Director Stone. I believe at this point, do we have any comments from the public? And any further comments from the administration? Then we'll bring it back to committee members for a discussion of this water line replacement and the authorization that's been requested. Member Swank.
Uh, three, three questions for Director Stone. Cost?
$222,000.
Timeline?
The, the contract is awarded to, to the general contractor for the building, but they've not been awarded the alternate yet. And so I am not telling Ohio University to move forward. I told them I want to, but that I have to get this ordinance passed.
Right.
I anticipate this is a 20, this is a summer 2025 construction start. For them, obviously, they're going to wait till after the school year to start on it. So I would anticipate this, the work on the water line probably will happen sometime between summer 2025 through the end of summer 26.
And last question, it's going to go from point A to point B. What are those two points?
Union Street to, or, yeah, Union Street functionally along Factory Street to where the 14 crosses through the, the parking lot by the OU Central Plant. So it's, it's, if you know where Riverside is?
Yeah.
Riverside is a, a university street, but, but it, it's basically Riverside.
So what I was getting at there, it doesn't appear that's going to, would, would not, it doesn't appear that would have an adverse effect on any businesses.
I think so.
Okay, good. Okay, great. Thank you.
I think maybe just one point of clarification from me, given that this is something that has been planned for the 2025 budget. And it will help us improve some redundancy to our water system. I recognize we only need to, as council, approve this because it's over $75,000. When was it that we knew this Heritage College of Medicine building was going to come online to create this opportunity for us?
I mean, I know that, that they got a major, and you'd have to probably ask Ohio University, like, when they got the, the funding from the Heritage Foundation to, you know, put it all together. I, I, you know, I know that we've worked with them on design for it, and it really was just an opportunity. As we looked at the design review and said, hey, we'd really like to get that line connected in there, and they said, well, we'll bid it as part of a, as an alternate. So I, I'd say summer, uh, summer of this year is really where we talked about it in, in depth.
Which is what allowed you to put it in the 2025 budget? Thank you. Hearing or seeing no more indications of comment, I would recommend that we conclude our City and Safety Services Committee meeting at this time.
Thank you, Member McCary. Next on the agenda is the Planning and Development Committee, chaired by Members Swank, Members Thomas, Wood, and Solve Spieles. And as President Protem, I'm going to stay here. I'm not moving.
Debbie's the only one who gets to stay up here.
I know.
Well, in keeping with the other two committees, we only have one item also this evening, and it's, it's, it's short and sweet. It involves adding two words and bringing a section of our code in compliance with the, the ORC. The first item deals with the BZA. And as it currently reads, the BZA shall consist of five members who are electors of the city appointed by the mayor. All we're going to do is add after the word appointed, reappointed by the mayor so that we don't have to pull out of our copies of Webster's and interpret the, how the English language is interpreted. The second one deals with the Shade Tree Commission, and basically says the same thing. All members appointed slash reappointed by the mayor with the approval of council. So we'll be adding the word reappointed for the Shade Tree Commission and also for the BZA. Two of the, in fact, the only two decision-making committees, commissions that we have, where council has some say as to the confirmation of the appointment. The third is the City Planning Commission. And in working with the law director, we found that our code was not consistent with the ORC in terms of the makeup of membership and all that. The Planning Commission for the city consisting of the mayor, service safety director, and three, two citizens, and two citizens of the municipal corporation, and one public member is established as provided in the Ohio Revised Code, Section 713.01. Council does not get involved in this at all. All this does is bring our code into compliance with the, with the Ohio Revised Code. The law director discovered that when she was researching this, this topic. So that's an overview of what we're, what we're proposing. So, members of the administration and other elected officials.
Please. I don't want to speak on behalf of the mayor, as he's not here, but I generally know his opinion on it, and he tends to oppose this initiative to change the legislation. I also would take one step further, you know, and while we're talking about boards and commissions, because we typically don't talk about boards and commissions very frequently, at least the, 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 the number of them that we have. And, and, and I would contend that there probably should be some board and commission reform in the city of Athens because there's a large number of them. We've built, you know, a number of committees to deal with things over time, and they're difficult to fill. At least they're difficult to fill with, you know, members that, you know, think deeply. And it's not to say that the folks that are on them are not doing tremendous work, and they, they really, really do tremendous work. But, you know, it's, it's a lot to ask a lot of people. And for a small community, the number of boards and commissions we have are a lot. And so, you know, applying additional scrutiny to, to those members and, you know, for their, their service on boards and commissions is something that in general, the mayor is opposed to. In fact, we would like to see the number of boards and commissions reduced, or perhaps some of them combined into, into, into a lesser number and, and combine the duties of several boards and commissions. I think that, you know, this is kind of a half-baked idea, and that it's not really ready for primetime to say what that, you know, reduce the number and, and how the duties will be combined should be. But I think that's just kind of a general statement about, you know, fielding the number of boards and commissions that, that we have here in the city.
I think you make a good point. Reflecting on the board that I was on before getting elected to council, it was a revolving door of members. And not only, I think, we look at the number, but also perhaps the frequency in which they meet. When people hear that city council meets 44 Monday nights a year, they said, though, God bless you. Members of the public.
Rob Delitch, I live on Morris Avenue here in the city. I was unclear about the third one you mentioned, what the change was.
The Planning Commission.
Yeah, what, what's the difference? What are you adjusting?
We're not adjusting anything. We're just bringing this in compliance with, we're, we're adopting the state regulations. Right now, I'll read it to you if you'll indulge me. Planning Commission for the city consisting of the mayor and service safety director and three citizens of the municipal corporation. Ohio Revised Code says two. And one public member. That's not in ours right now.
What's the difference between those two categories? Can you describe that?
Yeah, right, right now, the mayor and the service safety director stays the same. What we've been operating on is three citizens of the municipal corporation. Or Ohio Revised Code says two. But for that fifth person and one public member is established as provided in the Ohio Revised Code, Section 713.01. The members of the commission shall be appointed, reappointed by the mayor and serve in accordance with, and shall be subject to all provisions of the Ohio Revised Code pertaining to the commission. Here's the big change. The public members appointed under this section need not be residents of the municipal corporation, but shall be residents of the county in which the municipal corporation is located or a township that is adjacent to the county. So that's the big change.
That's what I wanted to know. Thank you.
And again, this isn't anything we're changing. This, the law director discovered this in researching the ORC. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Chairman Swank. Micah McCary, Three Windsor Place, Athens, Ohio. I appreciate city council's discussion and the city administration's comments on the structure and number of our boards and commissions, and trying to bring us into some compliance with Ohio Revised Code. I think that I would like to share my perspective that, in addition to the number of boards and commissions I've found since joining council, it's not very clear as to the rationale of which commissions and boards report to administration versus city council. It's my understanding that it's essentially which entity created the board or commission or task force ends up being who handles the appointments and reappointments. So I would suggest that council, if looking at the number of boards and commissions, also look at those reporting lines to think of any potential rationale of why city council would be perhaps the most appropriate authority to support and supervise a board and commission as opposed to the administration in some cases. Thank you.
Good point. Yes, sir.
So would it be appropriate then that, that council would create a ad hoc commission to study the various commissions and boards? And then come back with recommendations whether or not to do anything about it?
So a committee on committees, yes.
Exactly. Or the Bureau of Bureaus.
Yeah. As we approach nine o'clock, I think we will go back to Director Stone comment. As we're quite, not, not quite there yet, but we will circle the wagons at the appropriate time.
Okay.
Any other comments from members of council, members of council, oh, yes, Member Spieles.
Uh, thank you, Member Swank. So, yes, I appreciate the comments in general about taking a look in, you know, committee on committees or something like that. I think there's some validity there. I think my understanding is basically the mayor and the council have to get in, both get involved when it's a, when it's a commission that takes a vote that makes a difference in somebody's life. Like, I, I'm the chair of the Affordable Housing Commission. We're an advisory board. You know, we just provide some input and suggestions and do some legwork for folks. That's very different than, you know, the Board of Zoning Appeals that, you know, you can say, no, you can't do that. That's very different. So I think that it should be a delineating factor in that, in that. But as long as you brought it up, I think one of the things that I think might be a good idea, and this shouldn't really relate exactly to this, but to our rules. And that is that, you know, each of us are supposed to be involved with some other commission or entity, the people who are elected on council. And it seems to me it would be appropriate for us to report periodically on what we're seeing and that we're actually involved with those things. Anyway, I think it's worth some discussion. It's been sort of rolling around in my head. You know, if you're on disability, what's, what's happening with disability? If you're on, you know, affordable housing, what, what do you, what's happening there? I, I think that that might be something that's worth talking about. Anyway, just throwing it out there. But yes, I appreciate the changes. I think they're important. And so let's move that forward. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Does this update all of the boards to say reappointment?
To Solve's point, just these two, because these are the only two that make decisions. For example, the Board of Zoning Appeals, not only they make decisions, they could also be sued. Nobody's suing the Rec Advisory Board for making a recommendation to the Recreation Director and/or the mayor. Big difference. It's, it's a legal thing. Yeah. Same with the Shade Tree Commission. They have things, the Menard situation, for example. Talking about, you know, having to plant 873 trees, or whatever it was. You know, they, they have power, not recommendations, but actual power.
Yeah, I'd be in support of adding it to all of them, just for uniformity. Also in support of reducing. And to Solve's point, I, I think it's a little extra that we get added to a board ourselves. I, I think that's added work that you don't necessarily sign up for. I, I think that that's something that's sort of, again, we're already here for 48 meetings, getting added to another board and other commitment without, you know, input or just thrown in. Just an extra layer of work that I think is, should not be part of the expectation. But that's neither here nor there.
As we go through this process, it's certainly an item for discussion.
The committee of committees.
Yeah. Anyone else for the good of the order? That concludes planning and development.
Thank you, Member Swank. Last but not least is the Transportation Committee. And that is chaired by Members Spieles with Members Quatfalter, McCary, and Reisner.
Okay. Go. All right. Since there's one item, as you can see, and this one isn't terribly complicated, but I think it bears some discussion. So I was informed by Service Safety Director Stone that we have an opportunity, which seems like a good one, to fix, replace the ADA ramps on all four corners of the intersection of Court and Union, something that this Disabilities Commission has been very interested in as part of an overall assistance to people with. part of an overall assistance to people with ADA needs. And so, Director Stone, sorry, Director Stone, I have to tell you, I'm practically punchy by now. This is late. I'm tired. Okay. So Eminem Construction, who is working on the issues with the Lostro Building, completing the filling in the voids under the sidewalk, a little bit complicated, as part of their development, as these are the public right of way and could be a hazard if not completed, the city is splitting the cost with a developer for this work. And he went on to say that our share, the city's share, is $40,000. And when you sent this, you said that you're fairly sure that it's available in the budget. So my first question is, is it?
Yes.
Okay. As part of that work, the contractor is doing all the sidewalk flat work around the building on both Court and Union. And so, this is something that they want to get done over winter break. And my assumption then is it could be completed over winter break. Is that correct?
So to step into the next portion of the ask, basically, is we've asked them to give us a price to do the four corners, as you mentioned, of the entire intersection, when they're already doing the flat work for the sidewalks, as well as the crosswalks themselves and put stamped concrete onto the crosswalks themselves to remove the ADA concerns that we've heard so much about at this particular location. The intersection is what we would be pushing to have happen over winter break. And then they would work backward probably into that sidewalk. There are some other elements in the sidewalk that have to be done in addition to filling those voids that have to be filled and then the flat work on top fixed. There's some conduit that's cut right now. So if you've been down there at night, you see that our conduit that feeds the lights on West Union Street is cut and it's not working. So that has to be repaired. And there's a couple other repairs. So I think what we'll see is probably some of that work on that corner specifically extending in to, you know, mid to later in January. But the intersection itself, the opportunity is to try to get it done over the OU winter break.
Yeah, so to continue on, ask, as you were saying, is an additional appropriation to pay from the street fund. So in our earlier conversation, you said that their bid that came through was $168,000. And so, because things happen, you'd like to increase that a bit, just so we have a little bit of padding in case there's things that are unexpected, which, as we know, that can happen. So I have a couple of questions about that. One of the concerns, as we all know, is that this construction work on the streets on West Union and Stimson and other places have really done damage to businesses. So, and there's been some real concerns with the Lostro Building with the adjacent businesses. So I'm hoping that every effort can be made to not get in their way. I'm wondering what processes, timelines, anything that can make those businesses a little bit more confident that it's not going to ruin their business.
Sure. Well, thank you for the question. You know, one of the reasons that the cost is what it is, and, you know, frankly, materials costs, particularly concrete costs, are expensive right now. And not that they ever are not expensive, but they're particularly expensive now. But it's that I'm asking them to do it over OU winter break. So it's as least impactful as possible on the uptown businesses. You know, we talked a little bit today about how we would approach it. And I think we'd have like mobilization during finals week, graduation for OU happens, you know, a lot of parents come and it's not the summer, same as spring graduation, but, you know, it's still an event that people come to town. And so, that we don't close that area until that's passed. But then we get after it in Christmas week or the week before Christmas, or the week of Christmas, the week of New Year's, and then a couple, I think maybe a week and a half after that before OU, or two weeks until OU comes back in session, that that's the time that we're really having the impact, because I think the least people will be in that area. But frankly, I mean, there are two incompatible things. Replace the crosswalks and the curb ramps with concrete that's stamped to look like brick so that it's accessible and keep it open for businesses. I can't do both. I mean, I can't. So, you know, it's a, we have this opportunity because the contractor is doing that other flat work, and that's why I've asked for this to go quick. But if it's too impactful, if what I just described is too impactful, then tell me that and I won't do it. And we'll, you know, we'll bid it as part of the uptown project when the time comes.
On that note, should I bring up, Sam, what you handed out to us today? Or do we discuss that another time?
You may, or I may speak to it if you'd like.
Yeah, since you've been communicating with the guy and whatever, and I just got this today.
Sure. So there are a group of citizens in the city of Athens who would like to see us repair our crosswalks with Athens Block and not with stamped concrete. We are in receipt of a petition signed by 85 citizens who support this use of brick in our crosswalks. Looking into the history of the issue with the Disabilities Commission and the Historic Preservation Commission, I do want council to know, and I can send this communication with to you, that those two commissions jointly recommended in October of 2022 that crosswalks in the historic district be replaced with stamped concrete to color to match the historic bricks. So they still, you know, support the look and the feel of our bricks, but the Historic Preservation Commission has agreed to the Disabilities Commission that stamped concrete can satisfy the safety necessary for all pedestrians as well as meet some of our historic visions for downtown Athens. But city council does have the documents in front of you for, from Mr. Traxler and his supporters for restoring these two historic bricks. As Mr. Stone said, I don't believe that option is possible at the moment with the item that's on the agenda tonight. We do know that that fix had already been bid, I believe, once or twice, and we did not receive bids for that improvement project. So there is.
It was part of a larger.
Part of a larger project, just so the council has all the information.
So, that's okay. So I, my first thought was, wouldn't that take longer?
Yes.
And would the Eminem even be willing to do it?
Let's do, I'm sorry, make sure I understand the question. Is it to relay the existing Athens Block? Yes, it would take longer. They are going to relay the, if you look at that intersection, there's an X-shaped crosswalk in the middle, and then there's four crosswalks on the sides. And then in between those, there are triangles of brick. And they are going to relay those bricks inside those triangles. It's just the crosswalks themselves will have to get, you know, removed and then placed with brick or stamped concrete in that section. I did talk, or I did pose to the Disabilities Commission, you know, something like Mr. Traxler's recommended. And the best thing that I could point to was the recently completed work on Derry Lane. And the feedback that I received is that that was not sufficient and that they really want it to be concrete. Derry Lane is a pretty good example of, you know, relayed Athens Block that looks really good and it's pretty smooth, but it's not, you know, it's not, you know, it's not modern pavement.
Hey, any comments from the audience? Go ahead.
Director Stone, do you envision when they do this, they're going to have to close the entire intersection? Or will they be able to do one part at a time? I just shudder to think that before Christmas, someone couldn't find some way on the Court Street. Do you have any idea how that's going to play out?
You know, I haven't worked through the real specific mates of traffic, and there might be a possibility we could keep one movement open. I think the issue really comes down to stamped concrete and curing time. If I want to try to get stamped concrete, which you can't do as fast, of fast concrete that cures to the compressive strength that you need it to, to put traffic on it, and then get it all done during the four weeks that I have when OU is out of session. So ultimately, that's the question, you know? I mean, all of the things that we want are incompatible with one another. Stamped concrete, done real fast, you know, and, you know, so, and historic preservation of Athens Blocks, those three conflict. And so, I'm trying to figure out how to, you know, do the most good. And what I've found is that every time I try to do things like this, when there's conflicting issues, is that if nobody is happy, then I probably made the right decision. So that's kind of how I'm approaching it with this.
So I'm wondering if the Union Street side could be done prior to Christmas with being able to get on Court Street from the south, which a lot of people do come, and then soon as Christmas comes and goes, the other way.
We talked about that. And I absolutely will try to do that.
Okay, great. Thank you.
I'm Rob Delitch, live on Morris Avenue here in the city. I'm not speaking officially for organizations, but I do serve on the Disabilities Accessibility and Advocacy Committee. We've discussed this, and this is where the idea came from, to try and make our crosswalks more accessible and find a solution for that. Sort of wish that Mr. Traxler, I think that's his name, has adjusted this five years ago. He might have been able to talk through and come up with a solution that maybe helped maintain the bricks. But if you go to Derry Lane and look, I don't know how many have been there, look at Derry Lane as it's been, the bricks have been reset. It is how I wished all our streets uptown looked and rode. I haven't been out in a car, just on a bike, but it's beautiful street. They laid asphalt underneath it as a solid base and then put the bricks back down. And it's really how all our streets uptown should be built, I think. However, because it's Athens Block, those blocks have been wearing for 100 years and they're very uneven still. And for mobility requirements, it's still not good enough. So what Director Stone said, that the feedback you got from the Disabilities Commission is exactly that, that it's still not good enough for accessibility for crosswalks. If it were smooth brick, we could, you know, another surface, it wouldn't match the block, though. That might be another option that could work. You know, if you look down the end of Court Street in front of Baker Center, that's really smooth brick. If it was laid properly with a good, solid, firm base, that might be an acceptable solution. But again, it's time-consuming, expensive, and maintaining it is also an issue. If you look at the crosswalk across the street here to the parking garage, that's been in place since the 1990s, I think. I don't know the exact year, somewhere from 30 years, and it's still in really good condition. So it's wearing well, it's lasting, it's accessible, it's solved a lot of the problems, and it's one example we can look at right here and see how this would work. And I think it's a good solution. So that's one thing I wanted to say. I have a couple of questions about breaking this project off like this. I think the city had talked about trying to break it off because the other Uptown Streetscape project wasn't getting bids so that they could fix this intersection sooner rather than later. I didn't expect it to happen this way. So I'm wondering if we go with a second party to execute the contract for us if the city loses the ability to manage this contract and provide the sort of final product that we need it to be. So it needs to be accessible. And as we heard Disabilities Commission members, some of them were here a month or two ago talking about the problems in that intersection. It's been like that for eight years. Since then, the city's ground down the curb some, and that's helped, but it's still pretty rough. And so, we've also seen challenges over the years, and the city has gotten much better at working with its contractors to make sure that new curb cuts are compliant and accessible. But it's taken time to get there, and I'm a little concerned that the checks and balances may not be in place to make sure that happens here. I can't ask a question, I think, directly, but that's something I'm concerned about. The other piece of that is, I think, the original plan for this intersection in the bigger project was to include signal upgrades that would be audible signals, so accessible signals. And is that not included in this? And this is just being broken off separate? And maybe the signals would happen underneath the Streetscape project still? I'm not sure. Curious about that as well. Thank you.
Questions, thank you very much. Any other?
Oh. Just to add one piece, just to be quite clear. Mr. Traxler's petition does ask that any upgrades or improvements for accessibility be done using clay brick pavers, historically authentic or newly made. So he is realizing that new bricks might have to be used for this. And I'll just say that to Mr. Delatch, if that's okay, Mr. Stone, that you're correct that those auditory accessibility would be part of a later project, not done this winter if this goes through. But it's still in the planning stage. Thank you.
Okay. Yes, go ahead.
Hi. Almost two and a half hours to carefully craft my comment. I'm Michelle Hahn. I live at 774 West Union. I am a member of the Disabilities Commission and the Pedestrian Accessibility and Bicycle Task Force. But even more importantly, I am a member of the disability community myself. So I just want to let you know that we are still watching. We are not moved by platitudes like one intersection. There's a whole lot more to do. But we look forward to working with the Department here of Educated Problem Solvers, getting to work for the benefit of the public. Thank you.
Thank you. And anybody else?
When I'm in that thing, I see these, some of these bricks going by the gas station. You cannot, it's, I have a hassle and I have so much strain of my hands, but it is a hard thing to get those even up in the road, across the road. So I have to use like some of the gas station to go through to go home, because it's easier to go through the wheelchair than going down the transit hall. And some of them are really broken or not excessively great. So if you can get them fixed, it'd be grand. I know that'd be a perfect thing for people up there, but it's not even accessible to use as a walker sometimes. I mean, it is, it's painful when you have people in those kind, in the electrical ones, and they get stuck in them like. I have everybody ask, do you need help? Do you need help? No, I'm good. I got this. Sometimes I do want help, but sometimes it just doesn't. And people are nice and lean and some are just not, so. Yeah, it needs improvement a lot, especially on Front Street, for sure. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Any final comments? Oh, we do. Okay, yes. Member Clapier.
Well, I can see that there are really mixed opinions on this. I tend to have a great deal of respect for people who want to preserve our history. But I think, and so I see the point about using Athens Brick. And I think whenever the city is doing a project in which the use of Athens Brick would be appropriate, we should do it, because I think that those bricks are a real part of our identity and our history as a community. But in this case, I guess, in my personal opinion, I can only speak for myself, I think maybe the needs of the disabilities community trump that. And that if using pressed concrete painted to look like brick or some other option would make things easier for people in situations like Brittany Anderson just described, that we kind of have an obligation as a community to do that for our citizens.
I agree with Member Claude Felder, and just wanted to share a little information from our Athens 2040 Comprehensive Plan, page 74, regarding our uptown corridor, to kind of dispel some of the myths I've heard from community members who believe that our plans prohibit us from making these kinds of upgrades for accessibility. But on that page, 74- But on that page, seventy-four, of our Athens twenty forty Comprehensive Plan, says that most of Uptown Athens is within a National Registry of Historic Places District, established in nineteen eighty-one. However, listing on the National Registry does not provide any protection for these historic resources in terms of design and renovations. The nineteen ninety Brick Street District Ordinance was adopted by Council for Historic Preservation of the Key Uptown Brick Streets. The maintenance and preservation is overseen by the Service Safety Director, and the specific streets that are protected are listed there, including the entire east side of Court Street, north of Union Street, and all the block north of State Street to the North Carpenter. But essentially, the plan says that moving forward, the plan recommends the maintenance of all current existing brick streets. Brick sidewalks and brick alleys should be converted to another service and the bricks retained for street preservation. And although this does not specifically specify crosswalks, I interpret this, the overall spirit of the plan and commitment to improving accessibility, combined with the respect for historic preservation, I interpret that moving forward step to reasonably be inclusive of upgrading crosswalks, just as we would alleys and sidewalks, to be more ADA compliant.
Thank you very much. I just want to make one other comment. That is, having been on the Pedestrian Accessibility Task Force some time ago, one of the things that we see in other cities is exactly this kind of change. And one of the advantages is that it's, the crosswalk is then so visibly delineated from the road and everything else, that I think it's an advantage for pedestrians and for cars and everything else to be able to visually see it as a separate and safe space. So I haven't read this, and I will, but I think that's important to consider.
Maybe this has been answered, I just missed it. I'm like you, I'm starting to zone out. How much are we asking for, for this? How much is it going to cost?
Well, the rough, the rough cost is, they gave an initial quote, but it's not the official quote yet, for a hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars. I would like to ask for you to appropriate and authorize up to two hundred thousand dollars to do this. And really, I mean, it's speed is really what we're buying there. I mean, about a hundred thousand of that is the concrete itself, and then the rest of it is speed.
Yeah. And just from a personal note, you know, if I have a choice between preserving the brick and helping people move across the street safely and efficiently, I'll choose people.
Unless there's any other comment?
I do have one more.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
So, nobody's been a champion of brick streets more than I have since I've worked for the city. You know, we've made it a policy that we're not going to allow for utility patches and brick streets, like happened in the bad old days, you know, pre-two thousand, back in the nineteen eighties, where people didn't care. And so I'm a huge advocate of this. You know, we've got some great street department employees that understand how to lay paving bricks, which is a, it's just a skill that you just don't see in most places. Tremendously expensive, but, you know, we know this is a very important part of Athens, the fabric of Athens. In this particular project, we had an opportunity across our plate, and we've heard about this intersection a lot. We've attempted to fix it through doing a project, bidding one, and having got bids, but this particular one is a focus point. And this opportunity has come to try to do it in four weeks. I can't lay non-Athens Block in four to five weeks over Christmas break and get it done. I just can't. I can't make it look like Dairy Lane with non-Athens Block that are all uniform, and so it won't happen. So if that's what we want, vote no, please. If you do pass this, I just am asking for the administration, I need your support, you know, when we get these, number one. And number two, when we get the business owners or the folks that wish they could drive in the Uptown area during, you know, January twenty-third, and we're impacting the traffic. I mean, because I'm trying to get it done during this time. If we don't vote for this, that's fine. I'll include it in the larger project, probably won't get done until summer of twenty-six. So that's really the decision that we have here. So I appreciate you listening to my point on this, because this is something that we put a lot of brain power into, but I'm not wedded to it. I'm trying to take an opportunity if it's, you know, and I know we're balancing a lot of competing interests here. But that's the, kind of where I am looking at this particular project. Thank you.
Just to request a point of clarification, summer twenty twenty-six would cause theoretically less disruption to businesses or the same?
It would be disrupted in the summertime.
Okay.
Rather than over winter break, right? So I don't know. I mean, like from a maintenance of traffic perspective, we'd probably make them build one half and then one half. They would be less disrupted, but for a longer period of time.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just hope, and thank you, Members Swank, for adding to the point of the business concern. So if there's any way that if we're going to do this, we can provide for a lane to go through somehow, I think that's really--
I'll just throw it out there.
Yeah.
The four weeks we're talking about for Uptown business is the best four weeks of the year to do this. Absolutely the best four weeks to do it. Uptown, as much as we want it to be busy, is dead during those four weeks. Okay? It's the best time to get this done. Yeah, I know there might be a few businesses that might complain, but it is, as somebody who's been up there twenty-seven years, it is the best time to get this done, so.
Good to know. Thank you very much. I appreciate you bringing that up. All right, anybody else? It's nine-thirty, ughs. So, not that I want to cut anyone off, just saying. I guess that's it, so.
Your committee concluded?
Yes, we have concluded the Transportation Committee, and we're done. So thank you very much.
I believe we're adjourned.